And the senators present in the hall are the Vice Speaker Cruz and Senator Rispicio. And Senator Palacios was here earlier. Sergeant at arms, we need to get our members here. It's very difficult to start on time when no one's showing up. Senator Palacios, the Vice Speaker, thank you for being here this morning. I encourage the others to please rush to the session hall. Esta liya. Aste on a lunan chiao. I have to say that the Democrats are accounted for. I'm looking down the hall and I see all the Democrats on the right-hand side. Now can... So... So, I understand, yes, that Michael Steele is on island, so are they parting? Guthers, Senator Palacios, Senator Pangolinen, Senator Munia Barnes, two, four, six, Senator Ada, and myself. That makes us eight. The legislature is called to order. I recognize the Vice Speaker on Resolution 420.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that Resolution 420 be placed on the third reading file for today, and I'd like to have a few minutes to discuss this resolution.
Yes, Vice Speaker, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. Before I go into the resolution, I'd like to make a very quick amendment, Madam Speaker. If I could just, if I could have it considered a technical amendment, everywhere that it says "inalienable right," that preceding the word "inalienable," we include the word "inherent" and "inalienable right." That was at the recommendation at the public hearing that you attended. Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I want to thank those of you that attended the hearing last week on Bill 420, as you may know. I've been tilting at this windmill of self-determination since before this young man next to me was born. And I'm getting a little weary, but I will continue to tilt to that windmill in spite of the number of times my lance gets caught and I get flipped up in the air and bounced back down on the other side. We have had a history even between ourselves on my position on this inalienable right of self-determination. I know that you and Senator Guthers were both on the Constitutional Convention, and though I hand-carried it to Washington, D.C., upon my return, I incorporated Patapata because it was our belief in Patapata that you had to exercise that inherent and inalienable right of self-determination before you wrote a constitution. And we tried to use the example of, in a family of, well, children were not begotten just so they could beget grandchildren, but you were supposed to train them and educate them and provide them with the wherewithal so that they could become independent, constructive members of the community, go out, find themselves a significant other, a spouse, marry and have children of their own, live away from the home and away from the house. It's not necessary that everybody just kind of keep living in the house so that there's more people there to take care of each other, but there should be some independence of these children. And we in Patapata believe that before we could write the constitution, we had to be given the right to say how we wanted to govern ourselves. Fortunately, we were successful, but it has not been an easy fight since. It's been a very slow, tedious fight, I mean, educational process. Those of us in Patapata were able to educate Governor Bredalio in the 1982 campaign, and he then became a very outspoken supporter of the right of self-determination and establishing the Commission for Self-Determination. But the fight still hasn't, hadn't been completed and consummated, as it were. It has continued. Thirty years ago, Patapata had its first fundraiser to send Hope Costobel and Dr. Robert Underwood to the United Nations to speak before the United Nations Committee of Twenty-Four on the right of self-determination and the fact that there were still colonies here in the world. At the time, thirty years ago, when those two appeared before the Committee of Twenty-Four, there were in fact seventy-seven colonies that still existed and recognized by the United Nations. In 1990, the United Nations declared that for the next two decades would be the decades of the recognition of the right of self-determination to try to help others, colonies, to get their, recognize their self-determination. During that period, the only colony that was able to, in the last twenty years, get its self-determination, exercise its right of self-determination, and become a member of the United Nations was East Timor. During that period, however, the Eastern Bloc or the Soviet Bloc fell apart, and many of those nations then exercised their, or were recognized for their right of self-determination. But they had been previously sovereign nations, though they were part of the Soviet Bloc. And during that period, Madam Speaker, it pained me every time I saw the President of the United States, be it Mr. Reagan, Mr. Bush, Mr. Clinton, the second Mr. Bush, fly off to some country and celebrate with them the fact that Bulgaria or one of the Eastern Bloc nations was now, or Poland was being recognized for its re-establishment of its right of self-determination as a free and sovereign nation. And during that period, we sat here, and no one ever came out to celebrate with us the fact that we on Guam had exercised our right of self-determination. There have been efforts to try to do that, but it has fallen flat. Over the last eight years, the Commission hasn't even met with the Chair of that Commission because the governor hasn't believed in this right. So, Madam Chair, I was almost ready to give up on this quest. In fact, I was teasing Senator, former Senator Hope Costobel about the fact that thirty years ago she was at the United Nations, and this last October, I mean, no, this last March, her daughter, Dr. Hope Costobel, appeared at the United Nations to read testimony. And accompanying her reading testimony at the United Nations was one young woman, Andrea Santos, who is my mother's oldest granddaughter, my sister's oldest child. And I thought, we've come complete circle. We have been fighting this fight for so long that her oldest child and my oldest niece are now the two standard bearers of this fight. And I know Senator Speaker Pangolinen had a lean, I believe, quan read his testimony at the United Nations this last couple of times. And so we've been trying very hard, and it's not been an easy fight. The United States has not wanted to recognize the fact that it has colonies under its control. Embarrassingly, the United Nations issued a report about two years ago in which it stated that over the, since 1972, the seventy-seven colonies have now dwindled down to only sixteen. And sixty, of the sixteen, a full twenty-five percent of them or four of them are under the United States' flag, they being Guam, Puerto Rico, American Samoa, Virgin Islands. That's not something to be proud of, Madam Speaker. For a nation that claims to be the stalwart and the protector of all human rights for which we're, we've now moved out of Iraq but into Afghanistan to protect the human rights of the women of Afghanistan, to education and their protection, to not recognize that they have four colonies under the American flag sitting there to your left, to your right, my left, is, as far as I'm concerned, an indictment. But they're not embarrassed by it. They're not embarrassed by it, so much so that I provided all of you with the most recent edition of the Overseas Review, in which Dr. Carlisle Corbin, who, when I was working in Washington, D.C. in 1983 and '84, was my counterpart in the Virgin Islands office, and coincidentally at that same time, the, our counterpart in the American Samoa office was one Enifamaloega. And the three of us have always been very conscious about this need for our islands to, at some point, exercise their right of self-determination, which includes, for some people, and I know we have people in this legislature who support the fact that this right of self-determination could also include even the exercise of a more closer union with the United States in statehood. And that is an option if that is what is finally proposed. But the fact is, is that first it has to be recognized. In 2007, the United Nations passed a general assembly, without one hundred and forty-four countries voting for it, they passed the Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People, which was an international human rights instrument that for the first time in history formally and unequivocally recognized the world's indigenous people as a people under international law and gave them certain rights, one of them being the right of self-determination and the recognition of the right to assist them in their economic development. Embarrassingly, there were four countries in 2007 that voted no on this resolution. They were New Zealand, Australia, Canada, and the United States. All four of those countries have one thing in common: the fact that they have not and did not want to recognize the fact that they had mistreated the indigenous peoples of the lands that they took. In New Zealand, it was the Maoris; in Australia, it was the Aborigines; in Canada and the United States, it was the various Native American Indian tribes that existed on that continent before any Europeans came. But those four countries refused to sign, I mean, to vote in favor of this, of that declaration. Since that time, three nations have reconsidered their position. New Zealand, Australia, and Canada have indicated that they are going to be voting or have voted in favor of this resolution, of this declaration. The United States still was the only holdout who did not, did not state that they were going to vote in favor of the resolution, I mean, of the declaration. But then there was a ray of hope. In April of 2010, Ambassador Rice, the Ambassador to the United Nations from the United States, indicated in a statement on the floor of the United Nations that there was a possibility that the United States was going to, let me see if I can read that correctly so I'm On the floor, she said the United States was willing to do a formal review, there it is, on the bottom of this second page, whereas on April 2010, at the ninth session of the United Nations Permanent Forum on Indigenous Issues, the United States Ambassador to the United Nations, Susan Rice, announced the Obama administration's plans to conduct a, quote, "formal review" to reexamine the United States' position on the declaration. That was the first time since the United Nations was incorporated over sixty years ago that the United States had indicated that it was going to do anything about this issue of the indigenous rights of the various peoples under its, indigenous peoples under its jurisdictions. Enifamaloega, being the astute student of human rights, immediately introduced House Resolution 1551, where he called upon the United Nation, I mean, the United States government, the Obama administration, to go forward with Ambassador Susan Rice's position, contention that the United States do a formal review of its position on human rights and the inherent and inalienable right of the indigenous people to exercise their right of self-determination. He introduced the resolution with six other cosponsors, among them the delegate from Washington, D.C. Initially, our delegate unfortunately was not one of the cosponsors. I wrote to her immediately upon hearing about this, that the 1551 had been introduced. I haven't received word as to whether or not she has in fact signed on as a cosponsor, but I'm hoping that she has, or has already, or will very soon after this resolution passes. But Madam Speaker, it's imperative that the United States, in fact, I even wrote to Secretary, Assistant Secretary Babauta about this issue, and asked him to make sure that as our representative in Washington, that, I mean, on the, in the administration, that he do everything that he can to get the administration to do a formal review. For those of you that knew Tony when he was at the university, he was a very outspoken, in fact, he was one of our young followers in the early part of this movement, that if you speak to some of the students up at the university, their recollection of Tony Babauta was always the fact that every other word out of his mouth, when he was auditing classes up there, because I think he, it was between his, before he finished his schooling in Washington State, and he was just here for, to work, and then was up at the university for the summer. But he was constantly talking about this inherent and inalienable right of self-determination. And we, in my letter to him, I tried to remind him of the fact that I knew this young man who was a very strong advocate, and hopefully that he would advocate for us with the Obama administration to rewrite this. But the House Resolution 5051 is now before the U.S. Congress, and the intent of Bill of Resolution 420 is to indicate and express the feeling of this Guam Legislature that one, that our delegate to Washington, Congressman Madeline Bredalio, sign on as a cosponsor of the legislation, and two, that this legislature indicates its support for 1551, and hopefully that it will pass before the end of this legislative session. But more importantly, it also recognizes that in the interim and in the discussions that were taken straight out of the DEIS, and I'm glad Senator Blas walked in, because it was he who was the first one to point out to us in his review of the DEIS that there was one section in there that caused him great consternation. And in the DEIS, and I quote from the DEIS, the following: "Guam's indigenous Chamorro population is strong concerns about whether incoming military populations would recognize them as both American by nationality and also as a unique ethnic culture worthy of respect and preservation. This could be mitigated by orientation programs designed in cooperation with the Department of Chamorro Affairs. However, an expansion in non-Chamorro voting population could eventually affect the proportion of Chamorro officeholders and government workers, thereby affecting the current government budgets and activities dedicated to cultural issues and practices. It could also affect outcomes of any future public site about Guam's political status." Yourself, Madam Speaker, Senator Blas, Speaker Pangolinen, and various other members of this legislature have quoted that part of the DEIS in many of the comments, of your comments to them stating, "This is unacceptable." But the way that the DEIS treated the Department of Chamorro Affairs, which the DEIS says we should work in concert with the Department of Chamorro Affairs, was all the comments of the Department of Chamorro Affairs were completely ignored in the FEIS, the final EIS. And had it not been for the fact that the Chairman of, that the President of the Department of Chamorro Affairs pointed that out to them, there would have been no mention of the fact that there had been these questions, these comments made by Department of Chamorro Affairs. They were never addressed. They've now, on their website, added an addendum and stated, "These are the Department of Chamorro Affairs' questions. These are our supposed comments," which were not comments at all. Nothing like the promise in the DEIS to work in concert with the Department of Chamorro Affairs to protect us. And more importantly, there's been nothing in there, in the FEIS, to address that very last section, that it could affect any future public site about Guam's political status. There's been no attempt by the U.S. Congress to address this. In the meantime, in some of the periods that I've been in the States over the last, over this last year, Madam Speaker, the U.S. Congress has been addressing the issue of self-determination with Puerto Rico and with Virgin Islands. There has been legislation to address the self-determination rights of both of those two islands. They're not, neither country, I mean, neither government is satisfied with what was being proposed because it's not really doing much, and the options are not exactly favorable. But it would be even worse for us, Madam Speaker, because as you saw in today's article by Dr. Michael Bevoaka, the truth of the matter is, is the reason Guam is so important is because we cannot say no. That because of our status as a colony of the United States, that we will have to accept whatever it is they decide that they're going to do tomorrow, with the ROD being announced tomorrow. And it's not going to benefit us. I mean, I've been hollering and screaming about, in the last couple of days, about the fact that the prevailing wage rate, the Davis-Bacon Act, hadn't been amended. They did a survey in May, it's now September, the Davis-Bacon on the DOL website has not been updated. When I downloaded it on September the first, it looked exactly like what Carl Gutierrez issued on October the first, 2001. Nine years later, the prevailing wage rate on Guam is exactly the same prevailing wage rate that Carl Gutierrez, as Governor of Guam, pronounced in October of 2001. There's been no change. And Madam Speaker, the problem with that is all the billions of dollars of MAC contracts that were signed a few months ago are going to be using that prevailing wage rate. And under the rules for contracting, for the entire duration of those three- to five-year contracts of those MACs, that low prevailing wage rate will be what would apply to the contracts that are issued pursuant to that MAC. As a result of that, Guam will lose millions and millions and millions of dollars in income tax revenue. And I just want that addressed, I mean, I wanted that addressed in my letters to Secretary Solis, Secretary Gates, and to Congresswoman Bredalio, that all the contracts that are going to be announced in the ROD henceforth be held in abeyance until such time as the U.S. DOL completes its survey and publishes the new rates, so at least those of our young people who are up at the GCC Trades Academy get a decent wage. Is it any wonder why the Guam Department of Labor has been saying it's got millions of hits to, on its website for jobs, but nobody wants to apply? Well, if you looked at the wages, you wouldn't either. My office did a comparison of every single one of those categories of the prevailing wage rate with all the jurisdictions around the country. Madam Speaker, we sit second to the bottom in every single category. Only Puerto Rico pays less than we do. Is it any wonder no one wants to move here to work? Oh, sure, there's lots of big companies that want to come here and set up shop. That's because they can bring in all the H2 laborers, pay them those low wages that are currently being published in the U.S. DOL website as the Davis-Bacon prevailing wage rate. Their profit margin will be enormous. But does nothing for our workers and our young people who want to find and make, to be able to benefit from this buildup, thinking that they're going to. But I digress. I want, I, it's imperative that we get this resolution through and have the Congress understand that we want the United States to formally review its position on the rights of indigenous people, sign the UN Declaration, and after signing that UN Declaration, to do everything that it can to assist Guam move forward in the exercise of this inherent and inalienable right. But there are other rights that are included in this Declaration of Human Rights, and the United States has to recognize those. And one way that they can and should recognize that is to reconsider the way that it has been treating Guam in this whole military buildup exercise. They should be able to go through it and understand that in this Human Rights Declaration of of Human Rights are the rights of cultural properties. And Madam Speaker, I want to thank you and our colleagues for having attended last night's hearing on the programmatic agreement. But we have to protect our cultural heritage here and our antiquities. I'm glad that Senator Guthers was able to get us to override the veto of her bill to demand that the legislature be included in the process of taking any of our antiquity off island. But we've got to do that. We've got to have them understand that we have, that as the colonial power, they have a responsibility to us to assist in our economic development so that we can become self-sufficient. We should not be kept as barefoot and pregnant and just waiting for the next handout. We have to be assisted in trying to educate ourselves, develop other industries so that we can become self-sufficient. We have to be assisted in recognizing that our tourism industry could very well be supported and developed even further if DOD would assist in giving its nod to Homeland Security and to the US Congress in saying they support Congresswoman Bredalio's efforts to try to expand and provide visa waiver to the Chinese and the Russians that are come, that want to come and visit Guam. The hearing is scheduled for next week. But there are all of these issues. Madam Speaker, in an attempt to try to develop us, we've got to be, they've got to understand that we should be assisted in this economic development. I remember the one time that Governor Bredalio wanted to backhand to me in a meeting in Washington DC was when we went to Department of Labor because many of these people in here probably don't remember, but in the seventies, we had the, there was not only that we had the watch industry here, but we also had, there was an attempt to do some gloves here. There was an industry at that point. And there was objections by the unions. And so Governor Bredalio and I went to Washington and we were appearing before Department of Labor, trying to get them to assist us in allowing these two industries to develop. And they went on and on and on about the fact that, you know, the unions were objecting to this and then finally exasperated, I finally did one of my mutterings and, you know, I'm always muttering the wrong things at the wrong time and now I claim it's old age, but this was in my youth. I finally looked up and I said, "Oh, so what you're trying to tell us is that the unions here are so big that it's important to protect the union because we could all starve to death on Guam and there could be more births in your union to replenish Guam than to try to help us?" They looked at me and Governor Bredalio gave me one of the dirtiest looks he ever did in the eight years that we worked together. But, I mean, it's the truth. We have tried. We have tried every kind of industry to try to develop on this island, but every time we try to do something to try to get us self-sufficient, it's a group that opposes it in the States, we lose the watches, we lose the FSCs, everything else that all previous governors have tried to develop here so that we could become self-sufficient. But in this Declaration for Human Rights, the colonial powers are told that they have a responsibility. And why it's so imperative that this resolution pass as soon as possible, Madam Chairman, is I've given you also, all members receive the most recent copy, it's the August 28th issue of the Overseas Review, where Dr. Carlisle Corbin writes a story, reports about the fact the United Nations, I mean, the United States issued its report to the United Nations about its usual, its annual report on how it's dealing with its protectorates, its colonies. And very absent in that report is what the United States is doing about recognizing the inherent and inalienable right of self-determination of the indigenous people, of the colonies that, the four colonies that are still under the US flag. So I ask my colleagues to please join me, I know this is probably the longest that I've ever spoken on the floor, Madam Chair, Speaker, but this is an issue that I've been fighting for 35 years and it's very near and dear to my heart and I'm hoping that this legislature will support this resolution, give Antifa Maluega an indication. And I noted that some of the other co-sponsors were from California, the head of the Asian Pacific Caucus, Mike Honda, and the congressman, the other congressman from California, that we support this and we'd like the Obama administration reconsider its position and we'd like the United States to step up, join the other 150 nations in the world and sign this Declaration for Human Rights. It's embarrassing that they are claiming to be fighting wars elsewhere to protect human rights but refuse to sign the one declaration that shows that they are in favor of this. And so, Madam Speaker, I thank you for allowing me this extended time and hope that you will, that my colleagues will join me in this. I've been asked to indicate that this young man would like to be a co-sponsor and you, Madam Speaker, would like to be one. And I guess Senator Tina is indicating that she would.
Yes, I think you want to co-sponsor.
Yes, this child is not that ugly that we have co-sponsors. But anyway, Madam Speaker, thank you very much for allowing me this time and I'm hoping that I get support from my colleagues in this resolution.
Before you go back, anybody ask for the sponsors?
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. And on his amendment to add Senator Respecho, Juan Pad, and Nina Barnes and all members of Guthers onto the, as co-sponsors, and I'm sure everyone else on that motion without any objections, so order. On the motion, are there any speakers? Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized, and then Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Subs Masi. Masia ti sen na hi huhu dam gi idot zani gatso ngu gui ni tahtin ni tatmamana namunana zen kumentus. Pot gunzo para gui za gitche zoonya para esti self-determination issue. Uhasu funenina li utatiji esti hinasu ni diretsu ni tau 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 nu. Aniu atani man malulufan na tempu gui man man gi esti ibisinuta sia gui ni gi ma tau luki trust territory. Za gui na tempu sigya diu hasu hafas ti i trust territory. Hafana guaha nu gi za palau, gi za yap, chuk, esti i trust territory. Iza sa ipan sa mana poti gui zani za marionas ya ni man membru gui ni gi trust territory. Za hafas ti Guam na ti trust territory i Guam. Hafaku mekeli nyaino hafana klasin ni la la, hafana klasin es tau, esti i trust territory zani guahan ni manihitaha gui ni gi za micronisha. Lou sahnya Guam es tau nya. Disti adzu tahtin na tempu tipu mobliblikazu ni esti lou disti adzu tahtin na tempu ututun humasu za umustu dia esti. I hafa pufan malufan zan hafas sia diretsu ni tau tau ni manyasaga gui ni na lugad. Pues ti sekretu esti lou matunguana ma ifamilloku man mafanyagusina nou biadan si tatau biu todudu manginin esti i islan guahan. Man ma distilodu hulu gi za sa ipan fanan gi esti eighteen hundreds. Sa historia ku lan mampus agogot si tatau biu i mastat si ninitin, I mean, ni zoku great-grandfather, Tata ni tatau biu dan Tata ni tataonya. Ku lan mampus agogot para espanyot gui ni za sigi man ma kontra sia pos man ma distilodu hulu sa ipan. Sa fananeno guasia na storia na todujis ti siama, ti sida man ma kontrol gui ni ni espanyot na tamoru. Idu man malagu i tamoru hulu pa luta zan tinean zan sa ipan. But i espanyot komoni zama na fanhanu hulu zan fanyaga gui zan i espanyotsi nya utso gui hafama lagu nya gui ni gi za Guam. Pos eni gi hinasoku man sanganeku nam tutuonya naman staba gi hulu gi za sa ipan genau gi taftaf, I mean, gi ya nu i eighteen hundreds, i mil ochosentus ya nasakan, mil ochosentus is entai otu estai mil osentus estaki, mil nanrebisentus. Ni mabira sia mogi si ya na noubia zan manyaga gui ni ta lu. Feradi u antes diu mabira sia mogi u hasu si tatan tatau naman hanu zan manyaga gui ni gi zan yap, zan palau, guahati au mafanyagun palau, manyaga yap, sina noubia zan si ya, zani famagonya, ti au sia man i masomku na ti au mafanyagi zan pelilu. Sa itzapanis komutrotro edzu na tempu i za, izi i zan micronisha sa ginannania gi gera gi gera ni tanu uno. Za sia man manoi ni i man mangana man mataocun gi lamasa zan lengnya. Ita gumonastin na gera todu man mapedi mongita nu midu ni ngegeti gui ni uzu. Izu nmo mi zu pogo. Lou disti edzu na tahtin na tempu guaha esti ma oluk ne i para u inadahi edzu sia na tau nu zan tau tau ni tabiati man suficienti gi hinasunia. Gi hinasunia edzu sia man mangana i mandongkulu sia na na tau nu i za hapo, i za rusonu, i za limon, i ustodus unidos. Gi hinasunia timankaposta biastisia i man dikiki na tau nu zan itau tau. Para umanea sia maisa, masia karawan i man motu, sia man motu gui ni, sia man manyolan za tau zan lengka dunia zan itau tau itanu, itau tau itanu munafamboka sia ni man motu gui ni. Sa man malingu, sia man malingu ti shiita man malingu, ni man moluk man ma sudaid gui ni. Temalu lau moluk na sia sumudaini ita ta tungu mongit, sia timatungu mongit sia, sia man malingu. Loua ni man motu zan ma plantai bandera nya zan lengya edzu ni espanyode esti pogo, pa dizu na limone esti pogo, kunto i tau tau edzu nmo mi. Hafas edzu na klasin na natsu lou sia man gaibala, sia man gaipaki. Za edzu na sia mumanea zan mumantennis ti sia na tau nu. Posani makui gera unu negi wawawon, no, itzapanis man mangana guisa man yaza ni americano. Zan ma fudma edzu ma oluk League of Nations funenina, antedu hoalu esti United Nations. Ma fona edzi League of Nations zama poti uzu itanu edzu man mapedi sia ni man magogoti gi feradi itanu nya mismu. Pos mapedi ya limon gui na gera zan ya limon mumantetani i esti sia zan micronisha na banda na tau nu. Pos manoi guatu lugadi i para micronisha na banda lugadi i ustodus unidos mumantennisu itzapanis mu malagu. Pos lengya itzapanis manihita gui ni, hita man mangana edzu ita itzamiconisha ni tanu aluman, zigi malago u para izoku spoils of war. Para ginanokupu ni ta gana esti gera. Pos no'ya pogo zan hami bin maneia itau tau zan itanu. Pos edzu na motu itzapanis gi za micronisha na banda zan is sa ipan zan humolu gui zan sia mumanteni gi finakui gera. Pues matarabire tanu. Zati esti i itzapanis zan ni americano ti gomatsum. Itzapanis lengya posia zan si Hitler ni tau tau aluman ni ma kontra gi funenina na gera. Todu esti man sigya hita man gagagi it gui ni man la 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 it, man momoli ka it. Lou esta ti hita mumanenaya itanota, ti hita mumanenaya tau tau ta. Sa man manoi nyainu ni. Gi es tau nya hasti, ti gi hinasota, ti gi estu rata, ti gi kurasonta. Ni maini ni masia hafa macho gui na tempu ti man ma funasit ni tamoru. Gui ni gi es tau ta gi na man tau tau itanu. Lou ti malagu man ma rekonisa ino, lou ti ningayan ti ma punu edzu na guafi, ti ma punu edzu na kurason. Lou esta na ti manihitaha na maisa gitanota, esta guasia tau tau san hidzum mumanenaya it, sumangonganen na nisisita ta fantai gui ni. Sa esta ti hita na maisa gui ni gitanu, esta man parewit pogo man membru gi comunidad, esti i dangkulu na mas na tau nu zan tasi. Zan nisisita ta abansa mo na i stauta. Ti stauta como tamoru, estauta como americano pogo, pa i bastodun americano. Posani matarabire itanu zan matulaika tau nu zan man gera tau nu, man mahon mi hita lu gui ni gitanota. Malagu americano. Akuni itau tau nya za supta para hita la monta fona ye nemigu ni itzapanis. Ni ti man ma punu zan ni pakit zan ibala, sonra tutu ahukuk. Gi gu na man apakit, sia tumpedun crucial zan i Tominson tu sia todu genau gi za prosa dispanya tau zan dos dia shukuk bala. Sa tsuleano americano. Basia monu probenijit, ni bala zan ni pakit para ta defende, lotisinya. Pos humolu itzapanis zan amanteni hita lu, atutun tau nu mumandai, ta para ta saludas ya zan ta fantekum. Lou ti ma funas tau nu. Ihinasota, i kurasonta, itau tau ta, i hiningi, i ari, itanu, i kutura, i tamoru. Pos man duru mo na zama liita ni americano na la ni pogo sa unisisita Guam sa ti, ti sinyay plen gumupu disti Hawaii sta Japan po bom sa tinahunga sinina. Nisisita guaha otu tau nu. Nanga za sa ihud Guam zan Japan, nanga fa zan tau nu tahtin zan tatsuli tau nu tahtin zu. La ni, pos man motu tahtin, pogo na biit, tinahungan ni pofanolu ma, kontu dia sanan di sisiti diaz ni ma bomba. Sia ni bombnia. Za ma funas todu gui na hata. Za edzu na man hoalu. Za ma gi hinasunia, machuli tahtin itanu nya. Ti man motu tahtin para itau tau. Man motu tahtin. ti man motu toti para itautau, man motu toti para machuli itanu sa man nisisita itanu pos makpui gera talu nwebu na organisacion pogo sa i United Nations pogo pos man rekonisa na guahas ya tau tau ni man ma rekonisa ni man ma manteni ni tau tau san hidung zati manoi i diretsonia itautau ti sinya man mama desisyon sinya man ma togo ma togo na noyam ni tanu midu antimalago pos langafan zata noyam zu dididid pudeh para sinya bina siguru na anginin chili tanu mu sinya bimfana i comunidad itanu pogo za luk ohi ti inamon ni tanu sa inoi koti inoi citizenship inoi governmentun para sia za edzu na inchili tanu kontra i diretsonia ni man guaha lo timan manoi da bugao timan mala iskuela timan manoi da praise para ta na siguruko magohin na timan madigirujin ni balani tanu ta zan eno okuka manoi de koti na sinya ma oluk estigi diritomo ginegi istau estigi ya pasmo para itanu mogi titulu zame kefunasin lenga lani lusti angin matungu ustio trilinguahi feradi esti linguahin Inglaterra pos sempri no gua disfrantis klasihin asunya estati hinasun americano guaha gua sempri otru na hinasu an sinya esti linguahin ya ma kontinua posina zata kefunasi esti sa zatasangani na nisisita unmalefa fuminutamoru sa ginegeti o toti angimpurun finu English ginegeti o toti gi iskuela umatrasawo sempri gi iskuela an unfanagu itamoru ipadgomu fufinutamoru za estepuma aluman duru man finu English pos ginete o toti edzu sinusteniu lugadiun nina adbonsa todusti na klasih machogu para ta ma kefunas i hodihid zani hafa diritota gui ni gitanu pos edzu sia na man holo mesti sia i cetu i esti i taigu esti gatsumu nu introducesi siya na langafan sa ti dinansi eno anginta atan hafa i sisteman ni man malolofan gui ni gitanu hafa sia man ma fifinma, hafa sia man ma diklakara zini ziu ma fifet tahid pos estigi na nisisita ta babai mata niya tafanu ini leblunia zata spia zata dalai zati utaifan mamalo antiman mamahlu kontra hita direktamente timan mamamalo ni hafa bidadanya kontra ita ni tanu zani tanota, zani tau tau ta, zani ita ni tau tau tonu dalai zati ufan mamahlu angimpoma fana i otru zan todu itanu gi uzu ni man masangonganen na taigu ni amgui ni gi halungu ma maomi inrekonminisa todu za ino onra todu i kontratan maomi dalai zan ta babai zu na lebu zatafano isya zati u ma tulaika hinasunia untu hafan ona tahungi sa esti tamoru hinenggenya lusti unna mamahlu hita ni tamoru ta zama stat kilu para ta hatse dan ta susteni onra ni palabrota, ifamilio ta adai, adai bisentino na mamahlu ifamiliamu adahi huseno na famamahlu ifamiliamu onra ifinumu zo gui i dinansi za un onra sempri itautamu enigi ningeta edzu na timana apakit gui ni za yelletanu hinasota dalai lo na enigi mas fundamentu ini la la itautau gui ni gitanu dalai zati man taigu enosti americano mutu mas mapunemeti na man taigu enos ya masangongani tanu na taigu enohinenggenya masangongani tanu na taigu enoh bidan dan bidananya gui ni gi halumi esti izaguan dan edzi man manoi pudeh ni i United Nations para ma manteni za mana siguru naufan madbonsa esti na tau tau sia za sia uminanea itanunia itautonya i guinahania za usiguru na umachuli toti esti za siou denisidi para manusia mo na gui ni gitanu machogu ya noya americano gui ni guatu gi trust territory sa ilingya na obligasyonnya edzu kontra guatu gi United Nations no na man manoi sia para u siou administrador kontra i edzu sia na nugat estaki man listu itautau para siou manteni pudeh para hininalan ya zani gobendunya pos man ma tsuning mona zama hanau mona edzu na guaha i Republic of Belau i Federated States of Micronesia, i Republic of the Marshall Islands i Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas lo hita gui ni gi za Guam hafanati man malagu man parewai masia ti man trust territory edz lo hita ta zasina kumistion na man manoi americano para ma manteni guaham za administrador kontra i tau tau guahan za guaha obligasyonnya gi kontra edzi todusia inakontrotan i ma fitma ani man desidi na para sia mas mumanea esti United Nations na taigu ya na responsabilidad ma manteni ani ma chuli esti trust territory taigu ya na responsabilidad ani ma manteni guahan zaleña para betan na hanau mona lo hafanai na hitaha disti pogo man mauhonyo hitaha ni tau tau guahan ti man malagu ma rekonisa zama man manoi hid ni i diritota gui ni gitanu unu gui ni lenga gi resolution na zabe taitegi nina lenga the General Assembly in the Declaration on the Principles of International Law Concerning Friendly Relations and Cooperation Among States also known as Resolution 2625 unequivocally instructs the territory of a colony or other non-self-governing territory has under the Charter a separate and distinct from the territory of the state administering it, that's the US and such separate and distinct status under the Charter shall exist until the people of the colony or non-self-governing territory, that's Guam have exercised their right to self-determination in accordance with the Charter and particularly its purposes and principles inenge gui ni para Guam ustti timaputakomprendi guaha Guam USA estigi noya identitin Guam kontra i administering power pez guaha Guam tanu i man tamoru estigi i identitin guahan kontra i United Nations ni a fitma Ustadus Unidos na hungan estigi guaha tonu i man tamoru ni man gagi itamoru zati parewai no ti ti guami weseno sahnya guami wes, sahnya esti i guahan tanu i man tamoru za kadatara na fan man hasuna guaha Guam tanu i man tamoru man malefa padilenga estat estat ta zan no parewa ningayan no pareo sa ani ma fitma esti zigi lenga i United Nations i United States ani a fitma i Charter ni United Nations na estaki man mambota itautau ni estima oluki administered territory estaki ma konfortmi ma konfitma i hafa minalago niya itautau bi maneran man mambota gi self-determination ningayan na taigu edzi tanu Guam guahan tanu i man tamoru edzigi na sen impuntanti esti na resolution edzigi mas impuntanti namensahi ta na fanano ta na hanu guatu gi za Washington zata suputi si eni sa magohin na hagas lokui si eni a petsi gi esti na diretso ni tau tau itautau itanu sia ma sia ya tamoru gagigi za Guam but samoa ni gagigi za samo American samoa i diretso diretso ni tau tau ni tau tau tonu za debi Ustadus Unidos diu babai ma tonya za urakonisa hafa manili i anmananu manekungu man homum itautau san hidung edzu na debi di takkontinua gumoga na ufatu mogi i United Nations za atan hafa guaguaha magohin gui ni gitanu i man tamoru hafa bidadanya Ustadus Unidos kau aku kompli i hafa a accepta responsabilidadnya ani amanteni esti na pudeh gi papa esti i United Nations Charter zani sisita ta kontinua ta spia impenyu zata baba ibintona i petta za malini itautau itanu kau magohin na ku kompli iris from irresponsabilidadnya zati mapu eno feradi manii sempri mahunguk mahunguk ginini tanu i man tamoru itamoru gi alun tanu i man tamoru na hungan man ma kolanisa hungan timalago zanti aspiya impenyu Ustadus Unidos para unoi na petunidad usaputi hid gi minalagota para taspiya zata fanhanu mona zata exercise esti self-determination edzu na sigia u spia impenyu ta na funa zan edziru ta zatarehista todu i man kualifica po fanmambota gui ni gi self-determination zata spia zata tsuning mona esti todu esti ta totsogui i man gatsongo gui ni ni inatan disfrantis banda todu para u tagosa edzi i diretson itautau itautautanu ni ningayan zan ta zan sinya fumunas na edzu na sinya unolu mafla sezu na diretso anginitautau ma spia zama mambota za estah ma kompli i ma oluk exercise the self-determination ti sinya ma funas ni apa tavan manoi nu federal grant patavan manoi section thirty patavan manoi nu museum lo lanya saranan mana omudit man maprometit pos lenga mengasia ningayan no ma funas sezu ma sia unoi dsb zone ni ti sinya salapi fumunas edzu na diretso hita ha ni tamoru sinya fumunas edzu angin ta kompli i plebesai zama mambota itautau na hafa minalago niya para istaunia istauta gui ni gitanu as ma membrane gui ni gitodudu interamundo pos edzu na tumatsu zu Madam Speaker sa nisisita ta ekunguk zani sisita ta na fan ekunguk itautau san lago gi hafa minagohit malolofan gini gitanota unu mina lenga no dididid fanaan man man hahaya estapogo i merencia interpreti zapaudi uma interpreti esti ipala prahu gui ni za ma komprendi sa ano finu Englishi ni linguaniya timakomprendia pudi ma komprendi esti anta songan i sininteta zani ginagata kontra i kurasonta i hinasota seduz masit Madam Speaker
When plebeso Speaker Pangolinan Pago Senator Respecho put for vote, continue
Ni fanta papaki talu si Senator Pangolinan Komentas kurentai menyutus ma olik na gorpanitu i linguah i zama olik na na komentas mina tamoru
Madam Speaker Kuma lagu na bayo chancellor hafe ileknya I could get the English version and I could take forty minutes as well but I also want to rise to commend the previous speaker for all of his work in this area and you can tell that we really just sat back and listened attentively to the whole decolonization drive that he's articulated in our beautiful language, Tamoro I also want to express my full support for this Resolution 420 I not only want to commend the sponsor, but I want to note that he used the number 420 and didn't get any flak for it. Because you know, 420 is tied to a particular movement, just as our decolonization movement is, and I tried to capitalize on that, but I had to change for another issue. But this gentleman was successfully able to articulate that this is a cause, a cause worth standing up for. I attended the public hearing the other night on this resolution, and I want to say how brilliant this resolution was written, how intelligent it's been written. And the sponsor of this resolution recognized a young attorney, Julian Uggan, together with his staff, Mike Lemica, two young people who were shepherded by former Senator Hope Cristobal. And the Vice Speaker gave all the credit and accolades to these individuals who worked tirelessly with his office. We also heard from another up-and-coming group, very young, dynamic individuals, and they go by the name of We Are Guam. And so what we're seeing with this resolution, Madam Speaker, is what we in the legislature have been hoping our approach to this military buildup would have been. This resolution recognized that because of the military buildup and because of this population increase and how it would change the face of Guam and how even the DAIS and the FEIS recognizes that the Tumoro people of Guam would become a minority in our own homeland, now is the time to bring these issues forward. Madam Speaker, we wanted, in the last seven and a half years, to prioritize the decolonization movement. We do have a decolonization commission that was never called to order, and despite legislative attempts in the first, my first term, I recall, in the 27th Guam Legislature, this commission was not even funded. We had to take $150,000 from the Lieutenant Governor's budget and transfer it over to the decolonization commission so they can have just the meager resources to survive. We saw the previous speaker amend the Tumoro registry several times over to figure out what can be done to get people to be excited about registering, and he's never let that effort up, and I want to recognize him and thank him as well. I want to say that, as young as the sponsor keeps saying I am, for the record, I'm 37 years old, and I know that my youthful age still is nothing compared, present in comparison to the amount of years that he's clocked in to drive this effort forward. Around 1991 to 95, I was able to be the youth member that sat on our Commission on Self-Determination. And I saw the great strides that Guam leaders have made to interact, at that time, to interact with the federal government, with Bush Senior and then President Clinton's administration. And you know, the two issues that the United States government have, the two issues that seem to be the most contentious are the right of Tumoro self-determination, which the Department of Justice continues to say that it's unconstitutional, and we argue that it's not, because the establishment of who can vote in this Tumoro-only vote is date-based and not race-based. The other issue is the issue of mutual consent. And so for 10 years, we went along to move forward, what the people of Guam in 1986 decided, as a majority decided, that the status to pursue in the interim is self-determined, is Commonwealth. And so as we moved forward in that area, we've seen the federal government commit to these two issues of mutual consent, and then at the final days of Bush Senior's administration, I remember former Assistant Secretary Stella Guerra, they reneged, and they said, "Everything that we agreed to, we're taking back; everything that we agree to disagree, we're still disagreeing." And so that basically killed our whole Commonwealth movement. What also we need to recognize is that we can't hang our hat in the United States. We can't expect the United States to address the issue of decolonization, and this resolution recognizes that the United Nation consistently points that Guam is one of the few, one of the last non-governing, colonized territories, and that the United States government must do something about that. This resolution asked President Obama to sign the Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples and to request that President Obama do this in consideration of the military buildup. We heard at that public hearing, Madam Speaker, those individuals who testified say that the United Nation is quote-unquote freaking out. They're freaking out because they have this decolonization fatigue, and we're hoping that this fatigue will kind of put greater pressure on the United States to remove Guam from that list of colonized territories. And so my support for this resolution, Madam Speaker, is genuine. I want to say that the fact that we're going to capitalize on the military buildup because Guam is getting all this national and international recognition, because we're supposed to play host to 8,900 Marines, which will translate to as high as 80,000 people over the next couple of years. If we don't capitalize on this military buildup and have the United States address all of our longstanding historical injustices, we might as well just quit. But I know that through this resolution, none of us want to quit, and we have a resolve and a recommitment to address these very same issues that mean so much to our Tumoro people. And so I want to, again, thank the sponsor of this bill, and I want to express and register my support, my unwavering support for the Tumoro people, for our right to freely express ourselves in this pursuit of Tumoro self-determination and addressing our political status. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, Madam Speaker, there's an old saying in our language, "The man goes, he goes." I say this because, you know, I remember in 2006, I had the privilege of being able to sit in a meeting with then-General Leaf, who had brought the news and the discussion, of the discussions of a buildup that was going to be occurring on Guam. And in that meeting, I looked at the general and I said, "As these discussions are going to go on, we're going to need to talk about how this is going to affect the quality of life of our people, and how this is going to affect the future of our people." And I remember he was very, I don't want to say standoffish, but he was also saying, "Well, I'm only here to basically express that there's going to be a discussion with regards to the buildup, and we recognize that although there are some issues, and those issues that you bring up don't really fall within the realm of this discussion, now those things would be considered." Then there was this discussion about the, and there was this announcement of the Joint Guam Program Office. And I remember that prior to the formation of that Joint Guam Program Office, what we were told by General Leaf at the time was that this office was going to work with the government of Guam, with the people of Guam, and making sure that what's good for the military is also good for the civilian community, and is good for Guam. Much to my dismay, when the program, when JPO was unveiled, the pronouncement by Major General Bice at that time was, "My customer, my customer is the military, and I serve the military, and that's it." And I looked there and I said, "Really?" And I continued to push on those issues. I said, "We got a number of issues that have to be resolved, that need to be taken care of before these discussions continue." And before I go, I want to applaud and recognize the efforts of one of our colleagues here, you know, good Senator from Baragada, in his continuing effort to be able to address our decolonization issue, and being able to fulfill the requirements that was imposed upon us so that that issue can be addressed. And his consistency in making sure, and in that, this issue, despite all the conversations, despite the military buildup, it's just because we have come of age, we have matured when we're ready, and we have to address our issues. And I bring that because it's going to matter later on in my presentation here. But I think we can all recall when we all received that voluminous document called the Draft Environmental Impact Statement. And given what little time we had to be able to dive right into that document and to see in draft form some of the proposals, some of the assumptions, some of the presumptions that were put together by an entity that was totally funded to make sure that the military gets what it wants on Guam. And in Chapter 3 of Volume 7, more specifically, that starts on page 3-54 to 3-65, there were two distinct statements that were made in that 11,000-page document that finally gave us the opportunity, and is giving us the opportunity, to say, "You know, although you say that our unresolved issues are not issues that are germane to the military buildup, because of your statements in this document, you have just put it to the forefront, and it is very much germane." In the resolution, it does state part of that. And I want to read that again so that people understand. "This is not our words, this is theirs. Guam's indigenous Tumoro population has strong concerns about whether incoming military populations would recognize them as both American by nationality and also as a unique ethnic culture worthy of respect and preservation. This could be mitigated by orientation programs designed in cooperation with the Department of Tumoro Affairs. However, an expansion in non-Tumoro voting population could eventually affect the proportion of Tumoro officeholders and government workers, thereby affecting the current government budgets and activities dedicated to cultural issues and practices. It could also affect outcomes of any future plebiscites about Guam's political status." Madam Speaker, these aren't our words. These are words that could be found, again, in Volume 7, Chapter 3, pages 3-55 to 3-64. It's not ours, it's theirs. So it makes the issue of addressing our political status, it makes the issue of addressing our rights as indigenous people very much germane to this whole discussion of the military buildup. And you know, I know that amongst us, there's discussions as to whether there are some of us here in this hall that are totally opposed to the military buildup, and there are some that aren't opposed to it. But there are some of us that says, "Yes, although I'm not opposed to it, like me, although I'm not opposed to it." Before we have these discussions to continue that buildup activity, we have to resolve, and we have to have discussions, and we have to resolve these longstanding issues. Again, good Senator from Baragada gave a very passionate, okay, presentation, in our vernacular, on the struggles that our people have had in World War II, and the continuous struggles and the weight that they have to go through. So there's no need for me to repeat that, in fact, I'm not going to be able to top that. But, you know, in recognizing that, I remember several months ago, we were in a public hearing on a totally unrelated matter, and I remember, Madam Speaker, you were sitting right next to me, okay, along with, again, you know, good Speaker from Baragada, in Baragada, on a resolution that I had, we had authored to address a greater voice, you know, in our government. And we were challenged by my father, who said, "You're going to request? You're going to respectfully request? Are you chicken? You know? You want to make a, you want to be forceful in this? Don't request, demand! And we have the right to demand! For our Anupku, who have been waiting over 67 years for closure to the atrocities and the sufferings they had as a result of World War II, we demand! For having to continue to pay for the services that we provide to our brothers and sisters that come from Micronesia because of an agreement that the United States made to them, and the understanding by the United States that it's going to have an adverse impact on our economy, on our finances, for those cost reimbursements, we demand! So I believe, Madam Speaker, that with regards to this issue, we respectfully request, we've respectfully requested for a long time. What have we gotten? The Washington Two-Step. So, Madam Speaker, along those lines, I'd like to propose an amendment that demands, that demands that this issue be addressed. I have to agree with a good author. We're a nation that goes out and fights for everybody's freedoms and fights for everybody's right to be able to determine the course of their future, and when it comes to ours within our own nation, we're not going to address it? You know, one day, the good author and I were sitting at the airport, and we were there for the arrival of the body of a young Tumoro who had given his life in service to our island and our country, and his casket was draped by the American flag. And I turned, I remember I turned to the author, and I also, the speaker was there, and I remember also, if I can remember correctly, the Lieutenant Governor was there, wasn't he? And I asked the three of them, I said, "Can you please remind me and tell me why this young man died?" He went to fight in a war so that the United States can give peoples of that country the opportunity to be able to express their, to live in democracy and express their voices, live without fear. And yet, he himself did not have any of those rights. did not have any of those rights. Later on, we're gonna be discussing another resolution that basically expresses our, and I'm gonna say it right now, I'm in support of it, it expresses our objection to, don't force our hand, and don't say that we have to sign something because, or we have to agree on something because the deadline is next week. And if it's not signed, if it's not agreed upon, that they can't move forward. Yet, when we've asked you to start to address many of our issues, to include the rights that we have as indigenous people, we're gonna be told to wait? To my goosebumps, we didn't ask for this to happen today, they did. If there's gonna be anyone to blame for why we're standing here, why we have to be in session today, and to be able to voice these concerns, and to put these issues at the forefront, right now, it's them, not us. It was their language, not ours. So in line with that, Madam Speaker, I have an amendment that I'd like to be able to make. Um, and I have it here in
Would you just like to read it first, Senator?
Sure. And this goes to, um, actually, it's on page eleven, there's no pages on this thing, so it's actually the, uh, it's in the resolve. It's the third resolve.
Is it the second to the last page, third resolve?
Yeah, second to the last page, third resolve. Okay, where it says, "Resolved that Iminitentinales Latuan Does hereby on behalf of the people of Guam, respectfully request that the Obama administration reconsider the impending military buildup of Guam which gravely and impermissibly impairs the human rights of the indigenous Chamor people from Guam, including their inalienable right to self-determination and be it further." To change that language, ma'am. So to now read, "Resolved that Iminitentinales Latuan Guam does hereby on behalf of the people of Guam, demand," not demands, I'm sorry, "demand that the Obama administration, comma, in line with the impending military buildup of Guam, which gravely and impermissibly impairs the human rights of the indigenous Chamor people from Guam, including their inalienable right to self-determination, support House Resolution fifteen fifty-one to support the rights of the indigenous Chamor people of Guam, and to sign the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People." You know, ma'am, we're gonna have to continue having the discussions with regards to the military buildup. So let's demand this. You're gonna have that right, you're gonna have those discussions, you're gonna have those discussions, and this is gonna be included in it. And this is going to be resolved. And I offer that amendment.
Thank you, Senator Blas. On that motion, we have the motion, we have the amendment being passed out, did everybody get a copy? Okay, does anybody wish to speak on the amendment by the good senator, my brother from Baragada? Ladies and gentlemen, based on that, we're gonna go ahead and take a one-minute recess. We were at Senator Blas's, Frank Blas's amendment, and just for the record, the amendment was passed out. I just want to make a correction that there was an amendment that was done earlier to include the word inherent on that.
So it says including their inherent and inalienable right
That's right.
to self-determination.
So I just want to make sure that you guys all make sure that you insert that into that amendment. So with that being said, anyone wishing to speak on the amendment, the Frank Blas amendment? If there are any objections, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries. Senator Frank Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Madam Speaker, this is as a result of doing recess, the discussion, suggestion from Miller is actually as a result of that, if you go up to the first resolve. And, um, you know where it says, um, "Starting on line nine, the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, and respectfully request that President Obama sign." Madam Speaker, it goes back to my whole concern here. We've respectfully requested for a long time. It's been falling on deaf ears. This is at a crossroads here. And this is the best opportunity that we have for this issue, amongst many other issues, to be addressed and resolved. And we have to stand up in behalf of our people. We've respectfully requested for a long time, we need to demand this. So I'd like to be able to basically strike out the word respectfully request, and just, and says, and demands that President Obama sign the Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples.
On that amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak on the Frank Blas amendment? Are there any objections? Stating no objections, motion carries.
And then, Madam Speaker, in line with, so that it's consistent, and I have the amendment here, and I'll give it up to the clerk. But it's quite simple, if you go to the title, page one. In the last statement, it says, "And to request that the Obama administration reconsider the military buildup, to strike that, and for three now, and to demand that the Obama administration address this issue in line with the military buildup." In light of, thank you very much, in light of.
Can you just repeat that, Senator?
And to demand, strike out, and to request that the Obama administration reconsider the military buildup, and to insert into that, and to demand that the Obama administration address this issue in light, in light of the military buildup.
Okay, with that amendment, clerk, did you get that?
I've got the document ready.
Okay, please submit that copy, Senator Blas. On that amendment, anyone wishing to speak on that amendment? Senator Raspisha, Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Very much, Madam Speaker, I certainly don't have a problem with that amendment, but sometimes we have to say what we mean, and actually, when we demand, we can we can change this resolution, Madam Speaker, to say that even before you have the military buildup, these issues need to be resolved. And I think that's consistent with our Resolution two seventy-five, where there were six areas that we pointed out in the DIS, that six areas that the governor, the legislature, and the congresswoman agreed to, that if these areas are not sufficiently addressed, that the military buildup shall be held in abeyance, and and the issues of self-determination and the longstanding historical injustices brought on to our Chamor people of Guam are certainly one of those areas, and so I asked the body for pause and really think about what we're doing here. Originally, the resolution asked President Obama to reconsider the impending military buildup, and these series of amendments, which I really don't have a problem to with, I just have some angst to say that it's kind of inconsistent with the policies set forth by this legislature. And so we really have to do what we say, and say what we mean. When we say that you don't come to Guam, you don't demand so much from our people, if first you don't address war reparations, political status, there's environmental cleanups, I mean, this is our only opportunity, our only shot, to have the issues of these historical injustices addressed before they even think about having more problems brought on to our community. We can't keep saying, Madam Speaker, that this is a win-win, this is a win-win, when we're on the losing end of the stick. We can't say that President Obama's committed to one Guam, one green Guam, and we haven't seen anything yet. And as the mover of this amendment pointed out, we had a public hearing last night that forces the hand of our state historic preservation officer to sign the programmatic agreement, and so we have to have a resolution to back that government of Guam employee, I have to say, don't sign it on the basis that there wasn't enough public discussion on those attachments, and that process is inconsistent with the NEPA process that requires that there be public hearings and public input as to how these areas would impact our environment, and then any community that they're gonna impact. And so, I'm not indifferent to any of those amendments, that the good mover is moving, but I'm just saying that we need to be consistent and maybe back up a little bit, because those amendments kind of changes the tone of the original resolution. I still have the opinion that the military buildup should not happen unless unless the United States government recognizes what they're gonna do to our community, and recognizes these historical injustices. And the reason why I think this Resolution four twenty is brilliantly crafted is because it exposes the United States government to the United Nations, and it embarrasses the United States government by saying, what the hell do you think you're doing to the people of Guam? What the hell do you think you're doing to our people? And if we have an organization like the United Nations to constantly call out the United States government, then maybe that's what we have to do. And let's tell the United Nations that we don't want this buildup unless these issues are addressed. And damn with them, those people that want to make a buck on the backs of the people of Guam because of all the military contracts that are gonna be let out. But after these people make their money and leave, Madam Speaker, who's gonna be left behind? And what are we gonna be left with? And so I just want to offer those concerns and express my sentiment as to how those sequences of amendments are gonna change the policy and the approach this legislature has consistently taken. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
See, just, Ma, see, Senator Raspisha, anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Guthrie, you're recognized, and Senator Blas's amendment on the caption.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. What I see from the amendment is really a departure from the sense of the original resolution. And Senator Raspisha is correct, the amendment changes the thrust of the resolution. The resolution originally basically stated that we oppose the buildup unless certain things are addressed. Now that would change with not just the first amendment, but now this other amendment. Doesn't say we oppose the buildup. That's the basic difference. And I think this legislature has to make a determination as to what direction it really wants to go. In Resolution two seventy-five that this legislature passed two, three months ago, we were very clear on what we expected from this buildup. And I think we need to be consistent. I know many of us here would like to see some improvements in the community and the island, and want to see this buildup benefit the island. But I have probably more concerns today than I did yesterday, based upon the kind of communications that we're receiving from the Department of the Navy officials with respect to our inquiries. And I want to share one thing with you right now that is relevant to this proposed amendment. This morning, I received a letter from Acting Assistant Secretary of the Navy Roger Natzuhara. He's back in the picture. Remember Mr. Natzuhara? He came to Guam, he was one of among six or seven different Assistant Secretaries of the Navies, or Undersecretaries of the Navies, that supposedly had been in charge of the Guam military buildup. Of course, the last thing we heard, he wasn't in charge anymore, and Mrs. Planterschel was in charge. Well, this is what he said to me, and this is in response to a letter that I sent to him on July twenty-ninth. Dear Dr. Guthrie, Senator Guthrie, thank you for your letter of July twenty-nine to ten to Mr. William Lynn, Deputy Secretary of Defense. Remember, he came to Guam, and we met with him, and he said, this is gonna be wonderful, it's gonna be win-win, we're gonna work with you, we're gonna communicate with you, remember that? I'm responding on behalf of Mr. Lynn and Ms. Planterschel. As Ms. Planterschel stated in her letter to you on August twelfth, two thousand and ten, the Civilian Military Coordinating Council, CMCC, which is an entity that is recommended in the final FEIS as a body to help coordinate the buildup composed of civilians from Guam and military representatives, the concerns you have raised are very important to us. The Civilian Military Coordinating Council charter is currently being reviewed by the participating federal agencies. Your comments will certainly be considered as we move forward with structuring the council. The comments I suggested in my letter of July twenty-ninth to Mr. William Lynn, Deputy Secretary of Defense, was that that council should include policy-level officials of the government of Guam, and not technocrats, not blind employees, but policy-level employees of this government that have the power and authority to represent the people of Guam because of their positions. I should note that the purpose of the CMCC will be to provide recommendations on construction pacing and sequencing for the military realignment on Guam. Existing inter-agency coordination forums, such as the Interagency Group on Insular Affairs and the Regional Federal Response Committee, are best equipped to handle some of the broader policy-level coordination you have highlighted. Indeed, expanding the role of the Civilian Military Coordinating Council to recommendations beyond construction would likely undercut the purpose and effectiveness of these and other vital inter-agency forums. He said, "I will continue to engage with you in the Guam community as we finalize the Record of Decision and develop plans to support program execution." What Mr. Natzuhara is saying is that, no, the Civilian Military Coordination Council that we are going to form as part of the Record of Decision will not include any policy-level officials of the government of Guam to guide the buildup. That was not the response that I was hoping for, and I'm sure that many of us in this room would want to hear. But what it tells me, Madam Speaker and colleagues, is that when this Record of Decision is issued approximately September the tenth, all bets are off. approximately September the 10th, all bets are off. And the participation, the leadership of this territory in the direction of this buildup, in the eyes of the military leadership controlling this buildup, will cease and desist. So the communications that we were hoping for through the Civilian Coordinating Council with the military is not going to happen. It is going to be a bureaucratic, technocratic entity that will make decisions and recommendations absent the leadership of this territory. And I really do object to that. And that is why I am concerned about this amendment. Because basically, what the amendment says is, come, but be aware, we're concerned about these issues, and we demand that you consider these issues. Rather than, don't come unless you address these issues. It appears to me at this point in time, they are not going to address these issues. They're not interested in these issues. They're interested in one thing, and that's to get these bases built on their timeframe, not ours. So somehow, we have to reconcile this. We have to reconcile this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Guthers. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, Senator Blas, would you care to close, bro?
Thank you, ma'am. And I want to thank my two colleagues for expressing their concern. And I want to assure not only my two colleagues, but members of this body, that first off, I agree with you. I agree with everything that you said. I've always, and I made my position very public. And my amendment here is consistent not only with my position, but I'm sure the position, hopefully, of the body too, as well as this. Before we continue on these discussions with regards to the buildup, before we could advance in that, we've got, we have to address these issues. My concern here initially was that, I'm tired of respectfully requesting that these issues be addressed. We've been respectfully requesting for a long time, it hasn't gotten us nowhere. Now at the 11th hour, when they're going to push us to sign off on a document, well, you know what? No, we're not going to sign off on that document until these issues are addressed. And so my amendment and my intent was not to say that, oh, come on over. And while you're building your buildings, we can have our discussions now. I've always been consistent. Before you talk to me about what you want to do more on this island, we're going to have this discussion on things that have been longstanding. I've been consistent in that, and I'm going to stand by that. You want this to be good, a win-win? Well, here's how it can be win-win. You discuss our issues, and we use the forum that they set up. Because let's be reasonable, let's be practical about this, Madam Speaker. Really, if they didn't have the discussion, if they didn't have this idea of wanting to build here, what other forum would we have had to be able to demand this? So let's take advantage of that opportunity. Let's take advantage of the opportunity while they want to have the discussion on Because let's search our senses and find that if this discussion, if we weren't having these discussions, what other forum are we going to have to be able to address this? We've tried every other forum before. So let's navigate the obvious fact that these discussions have to occur. But before we have the discussions about how to move forward from there, we're going to finally have these discussions here. We would be remiss not to be able to take advantage of this opportunity. And that's why I offer this. That's why I offered the previous amendments. One, as again, tired of requesting. We have the right to demand. We have the right to demand because of the discussions you want to continue to have. And we're going to use your forum, the forum that you set up, to have those discussions. You want to move forward in it? Let's have these discussions. That's what I'm saying, and that's what I meant with this amendment. So I want to assure my colleagues, let's take advantage of that forum and assert this, and assert our demands there. Because if that forum doesn't exist, where else are we going to go? Thank you, ma'am.
Senator Guthers, we're on the, no, 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 I will apologize, he closed on the amendment. So we're going to vote on the amendment that we were, I think there was an, is there any objections? Senator Guthers?
I have a bid to be.
Okay, you know what? For the record, I'm going to go ahead and recognize this one time. Senator Guthers, I understand you have an amendment too. Okay.
That was offered by my colleague.
We're on the, we're on the.
Page 11.
No, 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 Senator Guthers, I do apologize. We are on the amendment that changes the caption and demands, okay? We are not on page 11, so we're on an amendment right now.
It's resolved, right?
No, it's not resolved. So please.
No, is it the part that says, resolve, that?
No, we're going to go ahead and take a one-minute recess. The legislature's back in session on the Frank Blas amendment. Senator Frank Blas closed on that, closed on the amendment. So are there any objections to the amendment? No objection, motion carries. Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Thank you very much.
On the motion?
Yeah.
Madam Speaker. Yes, I'd like to return to page 11, if I may, with an amendment.
And you're speaking on the main motion, right?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to make a very minor, but significant change. The amendment proposed, it says that resolve that the 30th Guam Legislature does hereby on behalf of the people of Guam, demand that the Obama Administration, in line with, in line of, I'd like to change in line of to prior to. Replace the words in line of with the words prior to the impending military buildup of Guam.
So can you read that one more time, Senator Guthers, in its entirety?
Thank you, yes. The new language would be, resolve that the 30th Guam Legislature is hereby on behalf of the people of Guam, demand that the Obama Administration, prior to the impending military buildup of Guam, which gravely and impermissibly imperils the human rights of the indigenous Chamor people from Guam, including their inadmissible right to self-determination, support House Resolution 1551 to support the rights of the indigenous Chamor people of Guam, and to sign the Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. So the only change, Madam Speaker, is just to replace the words in line of with the words
The address this issue is in the previous amendment.
But this is now part of the main amendment?
I'm going to take a 10-second recess so that I can confirm with the clerk's notes, because she has the amendment as stated.
And we voted on that already.
The legislature's back in session. We were on Senator Guthers' amendment, and after looking at all the technical changes based on that, the significant amendment is the inclusion of prior to. On that amendment, are there anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? With that being said, are there no objections? Motion carries. Senator Guthers, did you still wish to speak on the main? Thank you. You know what? It's quarter to 12, and I do know there's a commitment in the legislature for a meeting. We will go ahead and take, come back, we will recess and come back at 2 o'clock. Legislature's in session, I mean, in recess.
The Guam Legislature's back in session. Senator, do we finish with, Senator Blas? Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, first of all, I'd like to thank you for stumbling, I suppose, or just being able to know that the House Resolution 1551 was, of course, supported by the Representative Ina Faleo Mavega of American Samoa, and that then through your quick effort into asking that our delegate of Guam here actually get on board, I thought was excellent on your part, and I hope then that you have gotten confirmation that our Congresswoman is now on board as one of the co-sponsors of HR 1551. I would like to also, you know, convey, of course, appreciation from the representative from American Samoa for his support, and the other territories who have gotten on board. It's ironic that it would take individuals outside of our community to be able then to take a position in wanting to make sure that indigenous rights are being protected. And through the General Assembly of the United Nations as well, is that the, in the Declaration, is that they want to redress the historic injustices that are inflicted upon indigenous people, those who are definitely then colonized, and Guam is also one of those islands that are, that is still colonized under the United Nations. I feel, Mr. Speaker, that, and as you've stated early and so eloquently when you gave us the history of the Chamorro struggles, you gave us the history of, I know your group, Parapada, and of course, Senator Guthers and myself being part of the Constitutional Convention, and how, of course, we were able to defeat that in the sense that, you're right, we should really work on our self-determination before we can actually even put a constitution together. And I'm not, of course, as knowledgeable as you and Senator Panglinen, but many of the efforts that you've done, you know, in regards to our Chamoros and their inalienable rights. After you, of course, we all know that there is, there was a colleague of ours by the name of former Senator Angel Santos, who has, who's not with us, but has made his mark in our community as well. And, you know, other than knowing him only here in the legislature, there's really a lot that I didn't know about him, and I'd like to share one of, a, an article, I guess, or maybe a speech that he had written, that I think would be very appropriate, if I may. It's not very long, but I'd like to share it with you. And he had to say, and this is what he had to say, is that Chamoros have an inalienable right to exist as a nation of people. We are direct descendants of the original inhabitants of Guam with a distinct culture and language. Based on recorded history and archaeological findings, the Chamorro Nation is approximately 4,000 years old. Through time and the natural process of evolution, 200 generations of Chamoros were born into this world. Today, our nation is threatened as a result of immigration and Guam's social, political, and economic conditions. Sovereignty cannot be defined as an inalienable right for all people to exist as a nation in their own land. Chamoros have this inalienable right and the inherent responsibility to protect the land, water, air, spirituality, language, and culture in order for our people to survive. All sovereign nations such as Japan, Korea, Philippines, China, and others have a constitution which safeguards the sovereign right of their people to exist. Here in Guam, the U.S. Constitution serves to deny Chamoros their basic fundamental human rights. The United States took our lands, one-third of it is under the military, without due process and just compensation. Our fresh water is controlled by the U.S. Military and sold to the public. Our 200-mile exclusive economic zone is under U.S. jurisdiction. Guam's executive, legislative, and judicial process is dictated by the U.S. Constitution, and U.S. Immigration policies serve to make the Chamorro people minorities in their own land. The goal of the Traditional Council and this of the Chamorro Nation is to plan the course of our destiny and to perpetuate the Chamorro Nation. This objective is a tremendous undertaking which will require 101% of our time, service, commitment, and sacrifice. Our path has already been paved by Chamorro pioneers who came before us. These people have devoted their time and dedicated their lives for a cause, to protect our sovereign right to exist as a people and survive on this land. Indeed, many of our people have struggled for so long to attain our inalienable right to self-determination and to perpetuate our Chamorro language and culture. They have brought into our homes a sense of identity, belonging, and peoplehood. They have instilled in our hearts a sense of pride. They've planted in our minds a sense of direction. They have given us hope for the future. The act of proclaiming a Chamorro Nation was an easy task. However, there is much to be done in nurturing and rebuilding this nation. We must restore and develop the Chamorro Nation into a vibrant and self-sustaining body. We must not give up. We must persevere in our endeavors to achieve Chamorro sovereignty. The blanket of social injustice which covers the face of our nation must be removed. The right of our people to exist is an issue of humanity and should be the driving force in everything we do. As true disciples, we have an obligation to save our people. The survival of this nation, the future of our children, and the destiny of our people is in our hands. We are here for a common cause with a common goal. As individuals, it becomes a heavy cross to carry. As a people, we can work as a family to rebuild a Chamorro Nation. The spirit of our ancestors lies at the heart of our quest for sovereignty. And sovereignty is defined by Jose W. Diogno as, and I quote, "The right of the people, not just a few, and definitely not of foreigners, to freely decide the destiny of our nation, what kind of government we should have and who should run it, what is the common good and how to attain it, how our society should be structured, the wealth of our land and our seas used, developed and shared, and how our cultures should be preserved and enhanced," end of quote. The philosophy of the Traditional Council is founded on commitment, nonviolence, and human rights. The Council's nonviolent approach to resolving the social injustices will reduce the need for armed resistance by disenfranchised people. We also have an inherent responsibility to protect our environment. No people in the world can survive as a nation without land, water, air, spirituality, language, and culture. And this was signed by Angel LG Santos, who was a Traditional Council member on November 9, 1991. And it's so appropriate that, you know, I read this, because as we read further on in this resolution, Mr. Speaker, and you've spoken about a lot of the historical aspect of it, and how appropriate also at a time when the United States, you know, military buildup here in Guam is considered to be the largest buildup, you know, in recent history, and as a result of that big, massive buildup, that our self-determination right of the Chamorro people and other human rights are at stake. And I'd like to reemphasize three things that you talked about here in this resolution that really sums up exactly what this military buildup will include. And there are three major proposals of this buildup. One is the construction of permanent facilities and infrastructure to support the full spectrum of warfare training for the thousands of relocated Marines. Secondly, the construction of a new deep draft wharf in the island's only harbor to provide for the passage of nuclear-powered aircraft carriers. And three, the construction of an Army Missile Defense Task Force modeled on the Marshall Islands Base, Ronald Reagan Ballistic Missile Defense Test Site, for the practice of intercepting and intercontinental ballistic missiles. Just think about it, those three proposals, and how devastating those proposals can be to have a peaceful island, a small island, an island that is a colony of the United States. And just what would those adverse actions be, or impact be, to Guam, to the people from this type of development? And I'd like to cite eight of them that are listed even in the, and these are just only eight among many others. But they, but these eight are critical too, and why it is critical that we, the people of Guam, be granted that self-determination. Because these impacts are, and they're, one, the possibly forcible condemnation of some 2,200 acres of privately-owned land in Guam to support the construction of new military facilities. Two, the clearing of whole limestone forests. Three, the desecration of burial sites that are 3,500 years old, which contain the ancestral remains of the indigenous Chamorro people. Four, the restricting of access to areas that are rich in plants necessary for indigenous medicinal practices. Five, the clearing of countless native trees, such as the dok dok tree and the dag tree, that are used for canoe building, which are necessary for the continuation of traditional seafaring practices. Six, the denying of access to places of worship and traditional fishing grounds. Seven, the destroying of some 70 acres of thriving coral reef. And eight, the overtapping of Guam's water system to include the drilling of 22 additional wells. And at this time, I think, Mr. Speaker, that it might be appropriate to say where those 22 wells are going to be placed at, and they're going to be at Anderson Air Force Base, within the footprint of the military base. And in the FEIS, if you look very carefully at it, you'll not only see the site for the 22 wells, but even more importantly, a desalination plant inside the base. And I don't have to tell you what that means. So if you're going to prepare for the future for a desalination plant, then truly, there will be overtapping of Guam's water system, and where does that put the community of This type of changes, these are demographic changes of our island, there's going to be more than 47% of a population increase in our, in our community as well. 47%. How would that harm or affect the indigenous Chamorro people of Guam? How would that affect the Chamoros ever exercising their inalienable right to self-determination? And you said it so eloquently, and right out of the DIS, where this demographic change will definitely result in, and I quote, "reduction in Chamorro voting power," end of quote. We've just been, we just had an election, primary election, a couple of days ago. And although we may have 50,000 people registered to vote, just think, add on an additional 50, 60, 70,000 people who are new to our island, who are going to be voting and changing the face of our society, the face of Guam. Truly, the indigenous Chamorro people then will become a minority in their ancestral homeland. So this is definitely very appropriate. It came at the most opportune time, Mr. Speaker, and I want to thank you very much for allowing me, yes, to be a part of, you know, as a co-sponsor to this, but more importantly, to be able to even talk about this. And I hope, and I'm almost even sure, that you will, we will get unanimous support for this resolution. And I want to thank you very much for that opportunity again.
Thank you very much. Any other senators wish to be heard?
I have next on the list Senator Tina Munya-Barnes, but she's, has an appointment near office right now. Can we just take a short break? We stand in recess for a few minutes.
The legislature is back in session. Recognize the next speaker on Resolution 420, Senator Tina Rose Munya-Barnes.
Situs masi, Madam Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this Resolution 420, which this resolution is introduced by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. And I also want to extend my appreciation to the author of this resolution for giving me the opportunity to be a part of this resolution and this co-sponsorship. You know, Madam Speaker, earlier there was a comment about one of our colleagues, our colleague from Baragada was passionately speaking about the struggles of our people and the history of our people and the trials that had, the struggles they had gone through, and they noted or commented about him speaking about 20 or 40 minutes with, and there was this, kind of like a gist of, wow, he spoke that long, and there was also a reiteration of realizing and appreciating. And there was also a reiteration of realizing and appreciating why he spoke that long. And I was sitting where you are sitting right now, Madam Speaker, and I'm saying, if he wanted the opportunity, that good senator from Baragada wanted to speak all day on this matter, I would have given him that time. And even knowing what the rules of engagement, Madam Speaker, is on this session floor and the time allotted for us to speak, you know what? There should be no time, no timeline when it comes to talking about our people. We have an infresi that was written that we talk about or that we pledge to every time we open this session floor, every time there's prayer about doing the goodwill of our people, and that mere essence, Madam Speaker, of saying that estina inifresi, gin mustakulu gikursonhu, from the very essence of my intellect, imustakulum gikursonhu, to the deepest within my heart, janimasfigu nanisinahu, and every fiber of my physical strength, it says, hu ufresin maisa zu para. I make this self-fulfilling promise by hu protehi dan hu defendi, to protect and to defend ihinengi, i koutura, i lingwahi, i aidi, janihonum itanut Chamorro. To protect and to defend the beliefs, the culture, the language, the air, the water, and the land of the Chamorro people. Ni irencia inirencakudiretsugines duastata, which are inherent God-given rights, esti hu afidma gihilui biblia. This I affirm, the Holy Bible, jan ibandera ibandera hu, ibandera guahan. This I will affirm on the Holy Bible and our banner, the Guam flag. We say that all the time. And as I read it in Chamorro and translated into English, I apologize for my mistakes, my appling Chamorro, but for one who has grown up in a time where, at one time, we thought the military was good for us because they promised us they would take care of us, but on the other hand, one who has reservations of trying to understand why our people are always left out. Madam Speaker, we talk about this footprint of this island that is going to change the blueprint of our island because of the impending buildup, again. And once again, the rights of the indigenous people are not being recognized. It says here that one who believes within themselves, when they say this infresi, that they make that self-fulfilling promise to protect and to defend. And when we look at, I don't know, what would you call the FEIS, a contract to the people of Guam, or what's going to happen here, or a layout that doesn't have the fair playing ground, I guess is how you would say it, to engage with the people, they do cite that there is concerns, but yet, you know what, they just to cite and not let anything, you know, just, we're going to cite it and just move on. What do we take? What do they take? Or rather, what do they think? The people who own this land, who were raised on this land, who have centuries, over 3,500 years of Chamorro heritage, and island people who have been here before. The United States possessed this land. And island people who were here before the Spaniards said they discovered Guam. And island people who survived the many natural catastrophes. What do they think of this island nation? You know, I once said to the former president of Palau, you yourself said it, Mr. President, as island nations, we are separated by the waters. But as an island people, and the roots and the heritage and the cultures that we live today, the similarities that we live today, if we continue to preserve and protect that, we become united as one and bonded as one as we engage for those who want to take a part of this land that we call our home. You know, Madam Speaker, I don't pretend to be rocket scientist out there. I don't pretend to be a jurisdoctor, but I do know what I believe in my heart that I have and what I believe that has been given to me by our people, the passion and the path of this journey to protect and defend what we call our beliefs, what we call our culture, what we call our language, the air that we breathe, the water that we drink, that was a God-given right. And my brother from Baragada had spoke about us saying, how many times do we have to humbly or respectfully request that this, that things of this nature, that we request for permission when we are owners of this land? When does Uncle Sam realize that we are the people of the land and that with the beliefs and the traditions of respect that we were raised with, when do we say, you know what, enough is enough? You have come, you have taken, you have left, you have come back, you left again. And now when you need it again, you want to go in for the gusto and take it without realizing what we, as indigenous people of the land, need to be respected on. Madam Speaker, when I asked to put my name on this, I was really sincere. Somebody told me, be careful with what you say. It's election year next, in the next couple of months, November 2nd is the election. Be careful with what you say. I don't need to be careful about this. I don't need to be careful because as my son, who talks to me every day in Chamorro and try to, makes me feel good, Benadosa, that at least he can speak the language, and it's a shame that I have to start learning how to speak it because I understand it, but I speak it not as well as him, says to me, Mom, what are you going to do to protect our island, our beautiful island of Guam? This is one time where I can say, son, and I'll never stop here, to saying that it's things, it's resolutions like this that I can say, that I put my name to it, inscribe my name and saying, you know what, this is the right thing to do for our people of Guam. This is the right thing to say, that the 30th Guam Legislature will support the declarations of the rights of the indigenous people to support something, an other island nation is asking for in House Resolution 1551, to support the rights of indigenous people. And in our case, to support the rights of indigenous Chamorro people to request from this present Democrat administration to sign a declaration on the rights of indigenous This demand, you know what, they should have even known better. A commitment that they said that they would work with this island, it should have already been done by them. You know, Madam Speaker, the public hearing, I apologize for not making that, but I looked at the presenters, Attorney Julian Uggan, Ms. Victoria Leon Guerrero, Dr. Michael Lahon Bebakuwa, Senator Hope Alvarez Castobro, Dr. Patricia Taiminglu, Desiree Ventura, Juan Beneventi, Derek Sablon, and others of our colleagues who were there to hear their passionate testimony on why they support this resolution and why this needed to be done. And one that really stood out to me was from Desiree, when she stated that Chamoros are reminded on a daily basis of how secondary they are within their own country. It is an unfortunate reality that attention to the indigenous rights at home have been marginalized for too long and that she, as a young Chamorro herself, hoped that this resolution is a starting point for an actual legislation. That just reiterates folks of what, like Attorney Julian Uggan, who spoke in front of the United Nations one, two, three times in reference to this issue. Joe Garrido from Department of Parks and Recs, who continues to say, why do we continue to be marginalized in our own island? We are guahan who now, I can say probably have 8,000 members. I hope it doubles, who's saying that, you know what, this is our land. Respect who we are as an island people. Our colleagues here spoke about the past, spoke about the present. These folks here are speaking for the present for the future. What do we, as policymakers, need to give to our children and our children's children, Madam Speaker? Self-determination is our responsibility to be able to give. Madam Speaker, I am hopeful that all my colleagues here in the 30th Guam Legislature would support this resolution and all the other legislation that's going to come to play so that we know that in our hearts, and that when we go home to sleep every night, that we can say and truly say that that self-fulfilling promise is that we will protect, we will defend our culture, our language, our history, our beliefs, the air that we breathe, the water that we are blessed with. I am very hopeful, and I ask, and I humbly ask, that my colleagues, hands down, put their vote to this resolution. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this. I want to thank all those in the community who spoke out in one way or another about the concerns and about truly trying to set that journey and that path so that we can come to a close and fully come to a self-determination of what our island really wants to be. And I'm humbled by the fact that our young community are speaking out and sharing their beliefs and their desires and their wants and telling Uncle Sam that you need to look at us as island people, as an island nation and owners of our land, of our beautiful island Guam. Situs masi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnes. Are there any other speakers? I would like to recognize the Vice Speaker to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank all my colleagues for their very impassioned speeches in support of the resolution. Before I move the bill down, I'd just like to make one last amendment, if that would be possible, Madam Speaker.
Yes.
On page six, line 18, after 22 additional wells, if we could just include the words "in Anderson Air Force Base." It's just clarification.
Okay. On page six, line 18, after the word "wells," the drilling of 22 additional wells in Anderson Air Force Base.
It's a pretty simple amendment. I hope I don't have to burn down.
So without any objections then? So ordered.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I don't want to belabor it. I think we've had very impassioned speeches, both in English and in Chamorro, and I'd just like to move the resolution down to the voting file. Thank you.
On the motion, the main motion to send Resolution 420 down to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We do have another resolution that we're waiting, so we're going to take a recess until we're able to provide copies for all of the members. As soon as I find the resolution here. Resolution number 432- Resolution number 432. Vice Speaker?
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Resolution 432 to the third reading file, and I'd just like a short opportunity to speak.
Okay, you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, about two weeks ago, legal counsel informed me that there was going to be a meeting at the Governor's Hall at the Laidier Freedom behind, at Adalou. I attended, so did legal counsel, and Senator Matt Pangolinen. At that time, we heard representatives from the Department of Defense, Department of the Navy, give a presentation on this programmatic agreement and the fact that they wanted the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Officer, to sign. I had various questions. My main concern with the programmatic agreement, Madam Speaker, is the fact that I wanted something in there that explicitly stated that the signature by the SHPO or any representative of the government of Guam on the programmatic agreement would not be construed as a waiver by the government of Guam or the people of Guam in the event that we decided to bring action, litigation on the violation of the NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act as it relates to the DEIS and the FEIS. The DOD representatives refused to recognize that. The other questions that I had, as it related to it, was they had over 200 projects, and legal counsel was very astute to point out that almost three-fourths of them were marked as being no historic adverse impact. And she kept questioning, "How do we know that there's not going to be an adverse impact at this site when we haven't even begun to dig and do any preliminary work?" And they couldn't respond to that. And so, we kept saying we wanted to be able to do each one of these things individually. We also were concerned that the programmatic agreement, as it was presented two weeks ago, had provisions for Route 15 being rerouted and the discussion about the, what that area was going to be used for, for the firing range. And we said, you know, we can't agree to this if there's not going to be a major discussion about that issue. We're not going to be able to sign off on this. I also asked why there was no... And those of you that received copies of even the most recent amendments or a recent version of the programmatic agreement, you will note that there is no signature line there for any member, for the Guam Legislature, and you as Speaker, or there is no signature line there for the governor of Guam. There are signature lines there for the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Officer. There's Department of Tomorrow Affairs. There's Parks and Recreation. There's the museum curator. There's the chief program officer from the Guam Historic Preservation Trust. And there's a signature line for the Historic Preservation Trust. But these are all appointed persons, Madam Speaker, and there's no policymakers that are being asked to participate in this agreement. And I asked specifically, why couldn't there be a line here for the Guam Legislature to indicate whether or not it did or did not support it? I said that on my own, I would like to have a signature line because I wanted to indicate that I did not support it because of the fact that it did not, it did not provide assurances that we weren't going to be waiving our rights to litigate the violation of NEPA. And so, legal counsel and I worked together, and she drafted this resolution for my introduction. I want to thank her for having prepared that for us. But this is to try to get the legislature to speak up and say that we support the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Trust, I mean, Officer, who has had some, has been angsty over this pressure to sign this programmatic agreement. At the hearing that you attended last night, Madam Speaker, you heard that there was some concern as to whether or not the non-conclusion of the, and signature by the SHPO of this programmatic agreement, whether or not that would or would not have an effect on the ROD, which is the Record Decision that's scheduled to be announced either tomorrow or the next day. And she had various concerns about it. And at the hearing, I mean, at the meeting two weeks ago, I was very put off by the fact that there was a signature by a, I mean, there was going to be a line for a signature by one Thomas King, Ph.D. And I asked who that was, and they told me that was an archaeologist from Maryland. At first, I was upset about that until I came to find out who this man was. Thomas King has been involved with historic preservation for almost 50 years. He is known in the national historic circles as being the guru of Section 106. In fact, he was on Guam a month ago and conducted a training seminar on Section 106 and its implications. Fortunately, our legal counsel attended because she had heard about it, and I commend her for having been that diligent and vigilant to determine that we should have that covered. And so, I'm glad that we were represented there, but I came to understand that Mr. King was the one that was the ghostwriter of Section 106. He has done training sessions throughout the country on 106, understands 106 better than anybody else around the, in the country. And he was asked to review the programmatic agreement from two weeks ago. I received a copy of the email that he sent to Mr. Manley, from Department of the Navy. And he told him, "I looked at this programmatic agreement, and you asked me how we can amend it." And I probably should just read it, if I could find it. The email? There was one email that was even earlier than this one. That's okay. No, there was one even earlier from Tom King, where he was asked to- No, the one that I was looking for, Madam Speaker, it's in my BlackBerry someplace. But the gist of it was, he was asked to amend and make recommendations on how to amend the programmatic agreement. And he said, he reviewed the programmatic agreement, and he has only one recommendation. I think at the presentation, he said, "We was asked, how should we deal with this?" And his comment, as I understand it, was, "Tie a brick to the programmatic agreement, and take it, and throw it into the Marianas Trench." And in the email, he said, he expanded even more. And he said, "There is no way to be able to amend the programmatic agreement. It had too many sections that needed to be amended." His suggestion was junk the entire programmatic agreement. Section 106 is very simple and clear on how to be able to deal with the preservation of cultural artifacts and cultural sites. And do each one of these individually as they came up. Don't lump over 200 of these sites together into one agreement and say, "This is how we're going to handle it." And so, that was his recommendation. And then, you also have, you were provided with emails from him where he again talked about the fact that one of the majors, the biggest problems with the way that this whole programmatic agreement is being fashioned and put together is that they're not consulting the people of Guam. There are various individuals who have applied to be consulting parties in this whole EIS process and the National Historic Preservation Trust process. Two of them are Mr. Jose Garrido, and the other is Levin Camacho, from Weir Guahan. Both of them have asked to be consulting parties. Both have been ignored in the emails that were being sent out by NAFAC and by DOD on how to be able to address these. And Mr. King, in his last email, was very astute. Where he puts, "For heaven's sakes, Bill, this incident is a beautiful microcosm of why you're having such trouble with the PA. You set the consultation up so you're talking only to approved official government-type bodies, and when the regular people seek to participate, you assign them to categories to keep them at arm's length, and then you wonder how people could possibly be suspicious of the government's intentions. Consultation is not rocket science. It involves talking with people, reasoning together, and it is most especially involves not failing to talk with them because you don't meet some technical standard that you've been able to adduce from your reading of the regulatory fine print. If we're actively looking for a way to trip yourself up on the relations with the people of Guam, and in carrying out DOD's responsibilities under the law, you could hardly find a more efficient way to do so than through this site, this type of exclusionary nitpicking." That's been the problem, Madam Speaker, is that all we're asking is that we be included in the discussions. And they have excluded us, and excluded us, and excluded us. Fortunately, we have people that are able to get word out. And legal counsel has attended a couple of those, has advised us of some of the other meetings we've attended. We've gotten word of consultation over telephone lines, long-distance calls. And I know Speaker Ben was on one of those conference calls last week. He wasn't invited to it, but he had heard about it, and he called in and registered his complaints. And so, that's the only, that's just the way that they've been treating us. And if you look at the programmatic agreement, that even as of yesterday, they have a signature line for the mayor of Tinian. But nothing for the governor of Guam. And they have the mayor of Tinian. At the meeting three weeks ago, we asked why the mayor was listed and the governor and the legislature was not of Guam? Because we haven't said that we were in support of it. You're not going to be asked unless they think that you're going to be supportive of it. That's not the way to be able to do this, Madam Speaker. They should be able to consult with us, accept our comments, and make the requisite amendments to it. They've not. And as a result, I asked my colleagues to join me in passing Resolution 432 to indicate to the governor and to the SHPO that we, the Guam Legislature, stand behind them in not signing off on the programmatic agreement and insisting that 106 be complied with, that we be consulted on an individual basis of the over 200 and some sites that are going to be affected by this buildup. And we have a say in how the site is treated, what is done with the cultural artifacts and the antiquity that's on that property, and that we have a say on where it goes, and it doesn't become part of the archive at Anderson or at Big Navy, and not available to us. I mean, I couldn't believe it when we had the hearing last week, Madam Speaker, on discussing this. And one of the people that testified, actually was on the Historic Preservation Trust, was saying that they were commending David Lottz at the Air Force. It was a professor from the university who said he was really happy that Mr. Lottz allowed the students from the University of Guam into the archives at Anderson Air Force Base to be able to do some archaeological study. Since when is that, are those cultural artifacts, those antiquity, Navy or Air Force property that we have, the University of Guam has to get permission from the archivists to be able to see? Those are the property of the people of Guam and should be available to us at market at the university for them to be able to do the study. They shouldn't have to get a permission from some civil servant at Anderson or at Big Navy to be able to review those doc, I mean, those findings, to be able to look at it. They shouldn't have to be able to find out that it's been shipped off to Honolulu or to Washington, DC. These are our antiquity. These are our cultural artifacts, and we should have a say in how it's treated and what's done with it. And all we're saying in this resolution is we support the SHPO and the governor in not signing this programmatic agreement and the enforcement of 106, as was introduced and passed. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I ask that my colleagues support me in this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. On the motion, I recognize Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of the resolution. I'd like to point out two glaring errors in this programmatic agreement in the signature pages. I don't know who did this last revision. This revision says September 3, 2010. If you look at page 37, the signature line for the Department of Defense, Representative, Joint Region Marianas, United States Navy. The name listed is DT Bezel, Rear Admiral. All of us know that Rear Admiral Bezel is no longer the Department of the Defense Representative for Joint Region Marianas. He no longer is the Admiral on Guam. In addition, if you go over to page 40, signature page, for the Commander, 36th Wing, Philip M. Ruffelman, Brigadier General, US Air Force, Commander, 36th Wing. This gentleman is no longer the commander of the 36th Wing. They have been replaced with their successors. So the writers of this programmatic agreement are not up to date on who the appropriate, according to their listing, officials identified are to sign this agreement. But beyond that, Madam Chair, you know, by any representative of the people of Guam signing off on this programmatic agreement, we're basically signing away our rights to antiquities and artifacts in areas that are very important to the culture and history of the people of Guam. We're telling the United States Department of Defense, "Do what you want on those areas you're interested in when it comes to any potential artifacts, antiquities, or cultural resources that may be on that property." Where in the United States would any community agree to such an arrangement? I dare say, nowhere. And the pressure that's been placed upon the Guam Historic Preservation Office to sign off on this agreement has been tremendous. We have to question the motives and objectives of the Department of Defense in pushing this matter. Obviously, it is an essential ingredient to their overall strategy for the buildup. Because they know whatever land they touch, they will find artifacts and antiquities and cultural resources. And they want to be able to bypass the scrutiny- And they want to be able to bypass the scrutiny of the appropriate offices of the government of Guam and of the people of Guam in handling this material. We cannot allow that. We'd be signing away the heritage of the Chamor people if we did that. So I stand in full support of this resolution, and I appeal to our friends in the Department of Defense to get real and to show the respect that they claim they want to show to the people of Guam, not just on this particular subject, but on all other subjects with reference to the buildup. Obviously, they're not being fair in this arrangement, and they're taking our people for granted, and we cannot allow that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Guthertz. Speaker Penglenin, you're recognized.
Thank you, and since this might seem, Mr. Speaker, on allowing me the opportunity to voice my support for this resolution. As you say, the 106 process is supposed to be a consultative process in which you bring in parties of interest that are going to be affected by the actions of and the projects outlined in a NEPA process that will affect the cultural resources of the area that people live in and have an interest in protecting the cultural resources and the artifacts and environment of the community. And the first problem with this is that it isn't that process, as you so aptly articulated in the email from Dr. King. You know, we have almost had to be Chamoru Sherlock Holmes to find out when these meetings are happening and where are they happening at, because they're not informing us. Even individuals who are intimately and passionately interested in these issues have had to receive the information through three or four different forwards of emails from individuals that are in the loop. It's not even just one forward. That's how far we were removed from the loop of this Section 103 process. What's even more discouraging and insulting is that initially, they asked the community, who's interested in being, becoming a consulting party? Send in your name and we'll keep you informed. So all these people send in their names. And after the first couple of meetings, people were noticing that they were no longer part of the email list because it was obvious in the earlier meetings where these people stood, that they weren't going to be just passive and roll over, that they were going to be interested in ensuring that the process works. We weren't trying to get out of the process, we just wanted to ensure that the process was adhered to and it worked, and that our counterparts were not interested in that whatsoever. You know, Mr. Speaker, in the meeting that we attended, came back to my office and put the agreement, this programmatic agreement, on top of the desk there, and our staff began to look at it, we began to discuss it, and we traded information that some of my staff members were also very interested in the military expansion and the buildup and the programmatic agreement and the protection of our cultural resources and our language and our way of life and all of that, that is going to be the area of potential effect, which is our island community. And one of my staff kind of looked at this agreement after our discussion and they said, "You know what, Senator? This is not a programmatic agreement. This is going to be a problematic agreement for us, the people of Guam, when this military expansion begins rolling, steamrolling down everything in its way. And we, in this agreement, are already determining that for the purpose of protecting our cultural resources and antiquities, that we already are saying where there's no adverse impact, where additional work does not, is not required and so forth." It is going to be a problem for us to try and protect our cultural resources if this agreement goes into effect. So it's not a programmatic agreement, it's a problematic agreement. And I think that's exactly where Dr. King was coming from in saying, "This is going to be a problem for the people of Guam when this military expansion starts steamrolling" because it short-circuits the process and it determines findings that are still to be determined. It already has determined that this is the area that should be eligible for citing of these projects because we determined that this area is not eligible, yet the parties involved have no idea how they, how did they determine that this site is not eligible and this site is eligible and this site has no adverse impact and that site may be an area of interest. We did not have that information. That was not exchanged. Remember when the Navy wanted to go into the land, I mean ancestral lands property to do further study of the cultural resources there, of the environmental resources in these ancestral lands property? And ancestral lands property said, "No." And they're going, "Why? Because when we gave you the authorization two years ago, the condition was that you would share your findings with us. Now you're coming back and saying, based upon your findings of that study two years ago, for environmental NEPA purposes and permitting purposes and Section 106 purposes, we want to go back and study some more, but we're not going to give you the information that caused us to be interested and concerned about needing to do further evaluation." They just kept them out of the loop. No. If we can't even trust you now to share your findings, now you just want me to say, "Your findings are good and that we agree and that for the purpose of Section 106, you have satisfied the requirements of determining whether or not these areas are areas of interest for the preservation and the protection of burial grounds, cultural artifacts, and all of these things." They want us to make determinations of things that have not been determined, and that is what Section 106 is supposed to do, make those determinations during the Section 106 process, not the PA process. So that is a big area of concern with regards to the appendix and the identification of those properties. Then we go to the section of the problematic agreement that's going to set out how they're going to mitigate. So now they have a mitigation plan to, for the protection of these cultural resources and access to these cultural sites, which have not been determined. It's, everything is determined now and we'll do with it, we'll deal with it later, but the problem is if you determine now, you can't deal with it later. For example, they, they're saying that, "Oh, yeah, remember Mount Humuzung Manglu? Oh, yeah, we're going to put a firing range, a road up there, and don't worry because we'll give you access on Good Friday." That's the mitigation plan. You know what? That mitigation plan for the expansion of this military steamroller is, will get access to it on Good Friday. That's like saying to all parents and brothers and sisters of loved ones that, "Don't worry, we will give you access to Arlington National Cemetery on Memorial Day. And all the other days, you just know it's there. And trust us, we'll protect it. Trust us, we'll be stewards of the place. And when you want to go visit or pay your respects, Memorial Day's the day." That's what Humuzung Manglu is. When you want to practice your faith, when you want to worship, when you want to remind yourself what your faith is about and what the sacrifice was made by Jesus Christ as symbolized up there for the people of Guam, you can do that on Good Friday, and that's it. That's enough. Not that I'm a Catholic 365 days of the year or that other people may want to come up there for meditation and other practices that remind themselves of our humanity. It's okay. That's not important. Important is Good Friday on that one day. Well, I'll tell you what, the American people will not stand for a mitigation plan of saying Arlington National Cemetery will only be open on Memorial Day. They just won't do it. So why should we be expected to do that? That's the Department of Defense's mentality in dealing with us. And we're not the only ones saying this. Even outside interested parties who are intimate with this process are saying, "Don't do it this way. It is supposed to be an expansive, embracing, a consultative process of the interested parties. Why do you want to shut them out?" That's what this problematic agreement does. It shuts us out of the entire process for making these determinations and giving them our perspective of what this expansion is going to have on our culture, on our cultural practices, and on our cultural resources. We can't let it happen. And I commend and support the state Historic Preservation Officer in both instances, Mr. Duñez and Ms. Uggan, for saying that as implementers of policy here, we're going to have to defer to the policy of this government. And this statement, as you have put into words in this resolution, Mr. Speaker, is what's going to guide their actions with regards to following the stated policy on this. And I am in full support of the stated policy that we can't have a programmatic agreement that shuts the people of Guam out, that will become a problematic agreement when we try to defend and protect our culture and our heritage and the resources that give us a tie to that culture and heritage. And therefore, I support this resolution. And if you would be so gracious, I would be willing to add my name as a sponsor with your permission.
We would be honored. Any objection?
In whatever order.
Okay. All right. Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
I support the amendment for Senator Penglenin to be the second and myself third. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to also speak on Resolution 432. And I think it's really important for our listening audience to know exactly what 432 is, and it's relative to expressing the Guam Legislature's objection to the satisfaction of the Department of Defense NEPA Section 106 responsibilities for the military relocation and other military buildup projects according to the terms of a draft programmatic agreement with Guam Shippo and without further consultation with the people of Guam and to further objecting to the proposed mitigation as inadequate. Mrs. Speaker, when we first heard about this, we were informed that members of our community who were involved, from shippo in particular, were being forced and coerced and into signing this agreement, even to the point where they're saying that failure to sign this will mean the loss of resources and even $5 million that they don't even have to give, but that they will go to Congress to request for that $5 million. I mean, you know, that's always been the case, is that they come to the islands and they dangle the money, the dollar bill, and say that, "You want this, then you give us what we want." And that's the exact same thing that's been done. We know that they do not have the resources in terms of personnel, the resources, financial resources to be able to hire some of the expertise that they're going to need. They're just short of staff and understaff and short of funding. So that's exactly what, you know, they did. They looked at their, what they're short of and say, "This is what we're going to provide for you." My understanding is that this PA has actually been in discussion since 2007, and the primary objection then to this PA is that there's been no public comment. Their response, however, is to say that, and they've provided copies of the two ads that they put out, one in the Saipan News and then the other in the PDN during the time when they were taking out the, to get comments on the DEIS. And they figured that that would be sufficient, and that's been a primary complaint from the local shippo. As of September the 3rd of this year, we are now on the seventh draft, the seventh programmatic agreement draft. And as you stated earlier with Mr. King, Dr. King's response is that it's really very difficult, you know, to even track any of these type of changes that have been taking place, that it's become so confusing that he would even, for him to suggest is tie it to a brick and throw it out, you know, in the Marianas trends. That's how bad it is. Now, the programmatic agreement that we just received this week is the seventh draft, and they're saying they are ready to sign off on that draft. And their response to shippo here and their, some of their objections to this programmatic agreement was an Appendix D. And this is how creative they were, is that when we were able to get all the attachments, we noticed that Appendix D is no longer there, but Appendix D became Appendix E. I mean, they must really think we're stupid or something, that we're really not educated, that we really aren't going to read, you know, all of the attachments, all of the appendices, and to even read the programmatic agreement. And then another objection was the language about mention of Route 15, which is, of course, the area where they're going to reroute Route 15 because of the firing range. So they thought, "Oh, that, okay, so we won't mention it." And if you read on page 3 on Route 15 where they, they striked it out, and it says now here that about defense access road programs, that it, and that it shall then provide means for the military to pay its fair share of, it's supposed to be Route 15 on Guam, that was stricken out, and they put in, "Public road improvements required as a result of sudden or unusual defense-generated traffic impacts or requirements." I mean, you know, Mr. Speaker, I mean, they truly must think, you know, that we are totally just, I don't know what to say, because I know we're not stupid and I know we're not and I know we're not uneducated and I know we do read these things. But just for them to think that just by changing the words, deleting an appendix, an appendix D, and trying to rename it now as E is just an insult. And I'd just like to just share some of the affectic areas. And there's 216 areas that are being addressed here, and just a few where they have DOD effect determination. And three, they said the mass grub and grave face, and we don't even know where these are, the ancient air force base, Norris Ram Utilities, and Norris Ram Parking, adverse effect, adverse effect, adverse effect. And then when it comes to resources potentially indirectly affected, guess what they said? None. Upper Harbor War of Improvements, guess what they put? No historic properties affected. Resources, again, potentially indirectly affected? None. Upper Harbor Military Working Dog Relocation, no historic properties affected. Again, resources potentially indirectly affected? None. And then you go through a whole list of projects. And it listed for every single one of them, "Further evaluation required." Every single one. On DOD effect determination, "Further evaluation required." Resources directly affected? Further evaluation required. On resources potentially indirectly affected? Further evaluation required. And that's for about 200 projects. Then at the very end, again, we've got four projects. But then, these are not really for us here in Guam. These are all for Tinian. And it says adverse effect, but then for resources, again, potentially indirectly affected? None. So in essence, the 200 projects for Guam, they're basically saying that there are three of them that could have an adverse effect, but not any one of the other projects. So they really think then that now we're going to be prepared to sign off on this agreement. Because in essence, their means of mitigating, and it's not really a mitigation, is to provide one archaeologist, who would go to the site, find all these artifacts and antiquities, log them down, and then put them up on a website. And that's their way of mitigating this. And Shipo's been asking these questions, and they don't have the answers for any of these. They can't say that there will really be no adverse effect. And we are saying that this military buildup will definitely affect historic properties. But for them to say that they cannot be fully determined prior to the approval of the military buildup is ludicrous. And DOD has proposed that in this programmatic, I can't even say programmatic agreement, because I don't see it either, as the Senator's previous speaker said, is that it really is problematic. Because then, one is that they're asking us to concur, to agree. You know, to, there may be some adverse effects to historic properties, but we don't know what those are. They're even saying for us, again, to concur with the determination that no historic properties will be affected and that there'll be no adverse effects. It is nearly impossible for Shipo to determine, and to, with the resources that they have, to determine whether the 216 separate buildup projects would be adversely affected without, one, is having the resources, the people resource, the expertise, and two, of course, the funding resources that they're going to need. This programmatic agreement, Mr. Speaker, is an agreement for 20 years. 20 years for 200-some projects. And we just absolutely do not have the capability to be able to go out and address all 216 projects at a time. The interesting thing also about this programmatic agreement, and Senator Guthriez had actually started to talk about it, is that the individuals who are going to sign off on this agreement, and as she said, is going to be the Rear Admiral of the Joint Region Marianas, is going to be the Deputy Commanding General, the Brigadier General of the Marine Corps Forces Pacific, it's going to be somebody in the United States Army, it's going to be the Commander of the 36th Wing. And then we have our Guam State Historic Preservation Officer, Ms. Linda Uggan. Then, no name yet, because I guess the Commonwealth has not assigned, then an officer who would be the Historic Preservation Officer to sign off. Then there's John Fowler, the Executive Director of the Vice of Council on Historic Preservation. The National Park Service, the Regional Director was signed off. The Department of Transportation, Abraham Wong from the Hawaii Division. The local government, as you stated, the mayor from Tinian, was signed off. The President of the Department of Chamorah Affairs, the Museum Curator from the Guam Museum, the Chief Program Officer from the Guam Preservation Trust, the Director of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and then lastly, Dr. Thomas King as the Interested Individual. And it's interesting, of course, that, yes, we have one, fortunately at least, we have Dr. King, who is an Interested Individual, who is an expert in this and has written a book that we've all received a copy on the laws and practices of, you know, individual cultures. So he's definitely very knowledgeable, and I'm glad that he's a part of it. But nowhere else do you see, not even the legislature, who is a signatory to this agreement. So the intent here, you know, Mr. Speaker, is that it's not so much, it's more heavy on the side of the military than it is on the local side. And as Dr. King had stated, even in his email, inquiring as to why certain individuals in our community were not even invited to participate, you know, in this teleconference. And he stated it so eloquently when he said that of all people to exclude, and I'm trying to find that section where it says there, but of all people to exclude would be an individual who knows so much about the Chamorah culture and historic properties on Guam that he not be part, you know, of this process, that he not even be included in the consultation process. And yet, we have all these other individuals who know nothing of Guam's culture and historic properties. So to me, it's just an insult, you know, that they want to push this PA forward, to shove it down our throats, basically. And I say no. And this resolution says no. And we're asking that the members, our members here, that we stand united in also saying no. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of Resolution Number 432. And I just want to, for a moment, just recognize a very brave, lone, classified, technical employee of the government of Guam in the name of Linda Uggan. Linda Uggan, as you know, has properly been placed, she's asserted her statutory right to be the State Historic Preservation Officer, despite this current administration wanting to elbow her out and move her out of that division. This legislature had to respond to that situation by, I believe, actually putting something in a budget, some kind of amendment that the good Senator from Baragada did, which we all support. But, Mr. Speaker, can you imagine if Linda Uggan just did like every other member of the Civil and Military Task Force and just rolled over and decided to do what the Joint Program Office wanted to do with respect to this entire military buildup? Can you imagine if Carlotta Leangueiro and George Bamba acted, if Linda Uggan acted in the same manner as Carlotta Leangueiro and George Bamba and others, who really believe that they're doing right by the people of Guam in how they're handling this military buildup? Now, I'm very proud of Ms. Uggan, Mr. Speaker, as we all are very proud of her. She was forced by the federal government to sign this programmatic agreement. And she said, "Wait a minute. I'm not the one who's a policymaker here. We need to step back. I'm not going to sign off onto something that didn't go through a proper public hearing process." And all of the speakers before me articulated the effects of the programmatic agreement as to why this resolution must compel this legislature to take action and express our objections to this process. But just for a moment, imagine if Linda Uggan was a member of the Civil and Military Task Force. I'm sure the administration, with the public hearing last night, she said that the administration will yield to her. And so indirectly, she's getting the administration's support in which follows suits to what this legislature is trying to say to her, that she shouldn't sign that programmatic agreement until the people of Guam have been able to properly weigh in to make sure that these historic sites are preserved and protected and that our culture ultimately is preserved and protected. But this resolution, Mr. Speaker, certainly underscores the biggest problem we had in how we're approaching this military buildup. We're kind of just giving in to the military's divide-and-conquer approach. Divide the people of Guam, then conquer that entire island community. But for as long as this legislature is empowered and for as long as the leadership exists to stand up to the federal government by way of trying to force the entire collective leadership of this island to recognize the importance of Guam First Commission. I know I probably sound like a broken record, but one day minus today, people are going to recognize how important and how much foresight we had to want to create that kind of process to make sure that these kinds of issues are thoroughly vetted through the local powers that be. And Ms. Uggan, last night, said it herself. She said, "I'm not a policymaker, so why should I be the one to sign off on this without any direction from the elected leaders?" You know, so as we debate the merits of Resolution 432, I don't see any demerits in moving forward in this resolution. I want to commend you and every single member as well. And I know that a motion was made to have the good Speaker Panglinen be the second sponsor and the good Speaker Wampat be the third sponsor. But I move that all members of the legislature be a cosponsor of this resolution. I understand that that's something that's automatic, but we shouldn't just make all senators cosponsors by way of an automatic mechanism, that we should adopt that by motion which I make this. You can just have it alphabetical order.
Any objection? Hearing, carrying on, sort of.
And then, Mr. Speaker, just as a matter of process, Resolution 432 was already duly adopted by the Committee on Rules. And thankfully, the Speaker called us into session this week. So I move that the legal council be instructed to convert this rules Resolution 432, which is already duly adopted, to make it a legislative resolution so that it has a higher weight and it has a higher importance in terms of the body actually adopting this rather than a function of the body adopting this while we're not in session.
On that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to make those two motions. Again, I rise in full support of this resolution. I'm hoping that we also recognize, which we do, how it underscores the problem in which this administration has been dealing with the military buildup. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. Any other senators wish to be heard? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to congratulate you and applaud in your drafting of the resolution as it provides clear direction, something that the Shipo not only is waiting for, but she also recommends and is also the sentiment of the executive branch itself. I think I've used up a lot of my motion this morning in the previous, in the previous resolution that's directly tied to this. I did make mention this morning that we were going to discuss this resolution and this resolution was centered around an agreement that they want some member of our government to sign. Not those that, and not to take away from her responsibility, because she does have a great responsibility. But I don't think I want to put also Ms. Uggan in a position where she answers to the people of Guam the way where required to. Not to take anything away from her. She's doing her job, and she's doing a great job at it. But, for lack of a better term, I think it's lame that the federal government would want to impose and put that responsibility, that burden of that responsibility on her shoulders, knowing full well that there are individuals that are actually mandated to be responsible. You know, I was looking at a, doing some research on an article this morning, actually retracing some information. Now, Mr. Speaker, I found very interesting that in 1946, a panel that was in panel, oh, I don't think any of us were even born yet at that time. In 1946, a panel that was studying or that was tasked to study as to whether or not our Manamco were entitled to compensation for what they had gone through during the war. Basically, made a statement that says to the effect, "In the future," this is now, mind you, this is in 1946, "in the future, Guam will be a strategic area that we can place a military base for the protection of our nation and for the advancement of security in the region. And that we should treat their people with respect for they were, they were and have been and continue to be loyal wards and patriotic." Actually, I think, no. I don't want to misquote, but I know that it was in 1946. I don't know if it was the Hopkins Report, Hopkins Commission. No, it was a commission that was commissioned, a commission that was commissioned by the president at that time. Like in 1946, they knew this. Like in 1946, they knew this. I'm sure that in 2006, when they finally came over here and they said, "Okay, let's, we've got to start to have these conversations with the people of Guam," they knew this And for them to think that we're just going to lay down and give them and say, "All right, we'll trust you in looking out for the well-being and the welfare of your land and your sea and your air and your water, your people, and go ahead and go ahead and do what you want to do," they think that we're going to do that? No, we're not. You know me, Mr. Speaker, I was looking through the resolution and there are areas there that I want, I thought we should be a little bit more forceful. But, you know, that said, open that up for discussion. Are we going to respectfully request that we be considered to be signatories or that we be considered to be at the table, that before they make any decisions with regards to our historical sites and our antiquities, that we respectfully request that we be a part of that conversation, that discussion? You're laughing up there. Because I don't think we should respectfully request, Mr. Speaker. We have been tasked by the people of Guam not only to protect the interests, our interests in the here and now, but in the here-to-fore and in the past. So I respect the wanting to be nice about it, but they're not being nice to us. You know, Mr. Speaker, because, you know, the statement, the heading of this says, "Relative to expressing the legislature's objection." And we object, and we, because we recognize it's inadequate. I respectfully request to amend those portions of this, of this resolution that state that we respectfully request to change respectfully requests to demand.
On that motion?
No objection.
Hearing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Are there any senators which to be heard? Madam Chairman, you're recognized.
I made a motion to make the rest alphabetical order.
Seidus Mausi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and support Resolution 432, which was authored by the good Vice Speaker, B.J. Cruz, which would express the legislature's objection to the satisfaction of the Department of Defense NIFA section of the Section 106 responsibilities for the military relocation and also the other military buildup projects according to the terms of a draft programmatic agreement, which I heard earlier that was stated that it was also, could be a problematic agreement. But that programmatic agreement with Guam State Historic Preservation Office and without further consultation with the people of Guam and to further objecting to the proposed mitigation as inadequate. Madam Speaker, based on the information of what was provided to us as late as yesterday, the programmatic agreement that was submitted, I don't know if the Department of Defense thinks we have a lot of speed readers or that, you know, that if, just keep giving them documentation and Guam documentation and they'll probably end up one day getting tired of having to read all these hundreds of pages or thousands of pages that keep coming our way. And it may sound sarcastic, Madam Speaker, but you know, when it comes to literally looking and protecting our island of Guam, our people of Guam got to be aware and got to stand firm when things that keep coming down or keep trying to get shoved down their throat that they take a stand in saying, "Hey, wait a minute. You want us to look at something? Then give us the time, give us the opportunity. Let us make sure that what we are working here will be in the best interest of the island." with the programmatic agreement by the discipline of where they work and who's designated as Guam State Historic Preservation Office or Officer, Ms. Linda Uggan and Mr. Joe Garrido came to testify in their support of this resolution and shared in detail why they supported the resolution and objected to this. I don't know, Madam Speaker, if it was noted that in this programmatic agreement, there was over 212 or 16 separate buildup projects that would be a part of this, and it was told to Guam that they've got to sign it or else. So I asked, what was that or else would be? And simply put it, that was probably a denial of resources to us, a, I don't know, a resource of $5 million that could go to the buildup for the Guam Museum or the Cultural Center and several other things that were said like, you know what, just sign the PA. And I want to read an excerpt, I mean, a comment from Mr. Garrido. And his involvement came in to the programmatic agreement early on in his career as part of his job as Guam's Historic Preservation Trust Office. And he had to familiarize himself as to the reason why the programmatic agreements are constructive in terms of focusing on federal government project and its effects on historic properties, no matter where they are, whether they're be inside the fence or outside the fence. He had noted that the PA does not only exist for Guam and that there are many other PAs in the states, but for him, Mr. Garrido's focus was that he was concerned about the PAs for here and that there were some elements to the programmatic agreement that protects how we deal with historic properties. And he noted, for the most part, that that could be a good thing. The problem with the programmatic agreement is the political atmosphere that this PA begs to question, whether the U.S. government has the right to create an activity on our island that would have a tremendous potential to destroy our history. And he noted that, "That's my question," to the terms of his involvement. Do I have the right to do this as a designated office on these terms? I believe they think they do because we are a territory and in their own political definition, which is Uncle Sam, they can do whatever they want to do with us and with our island. And you know, Madam Speaker, as I listened intently and I know you listened intently yesterday or last night, it goes it goes back to saying, for us as policymakers, it is our duty and responsibility as a government, more especially so with us as elected officials, to protect the interests of our island, that we have to be very, very careful. And when you get information and documentation that's given and saying that, "Oh, okay, we're going to give you updates, but it's due today and you must sign it or else." Where do we go from there? Who do they think we are? What is, what do they think that they can do to take or do over us without giving us that courtesy and respect? And for the most part, programmatic agreements can be a good thing because it sets out policies of what it's done. But there are also other alternatives that are dealt with in reference to this, and that's working closely with the National Preservation Trust on Section 106. And how training is done here consistently in Guam and the people of Guam are updated on what is happening in the, in, in, in the national level, that what our people need to know. And that concern was brought up last night. And one of the other things that were brought up that evening, I mean, last night, was that One of the things that were brought up, Madam Speaker, was the point from Mr. Garrido and him noting and stating that one very important reason that he opposed the buildup and had to look at what is being presented to him as an employee versus a representative, based on the discipline that he's working for, but also a moral, was that Guam is not self, is not, is a non-self-governing territory and our people is a non-self-governing people. We have no self-governance and no sovereignty at all, and we are kidding ourselves and thinking that we are making an agreement. If we have no power of negotiation, we cannot negotiate on the power of subordination. But he noted that Japan could because of their status or their relationship. And he noted that the reasons why Japan could do or not do and say to the United States, "This is why we'll make our decision in May," or "We'll give you our decision on a certain date and let them call the shots." But he noted that this was real, that if we were to have signed, if the signatories were on, and he also noted that the signatories that were listed there didn't even include our own people, our own representatives, didn't even include our, our, our community. And if we were to be the one or they were to be the one to sign off on something that would have given the properties that belong to the people of Guam, not certain individuals, but to the people of Guam away? Who was he to say that he could do that? Madam Chair, as I spoke earlier in reference to the previous resolution, I stand here again to support Vice Speaker Cruz's resolution and to share that it is with the administrative, with the administration's concerns, the State Historic Preservation Office's concerns and the community's concerns, that this PA that is being presented us, to us today, is not good at this present time. And I hope that my colleagues, Madam Speaker, will support the Vice Speaker's efforts in making sure that this resolution gets given to the, supported unanimously and given to the advisory group and to the DOD, so that they can, the advisory council, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, for the Historic Preservation, to DOD, to Jigpo, to show that we have some major concerns and that if we want things to work, then you've got to give sufficient time for us to be able to look through it, work through it, and work together so that Guam's issues and interests comes first and that the lands and the projects that are needing to be done and worked with, the people of Guam got to be able to say, "It's okay." Because if it's not okay to take away our cultural sites, then they shouldn't be able to have it. So, thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Are there any other speakers on Resolution 432? There being none, Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
In light of the very eloquent statements that have been made by my colleagues, Madam Speaker, I have nothing to add except to ask that the bill be, the resolution be moved down to the voting file. Thank you.
On the motion to send Resolution 432 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We will recess until two tomorrow afternoon. And, but then we need to still meet at nine o'clock for a resolution. Okay, so recess until two tomorrow.